All right. We have our student rep, Ms. Claire Phillips from McBride. So Claire, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to lead us in the pledge.
Of course. Can everyone please stand? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. Oh, oh my goodness. I find myself reading from the regular one and not the remote one. I'm so sorry. We are meeting remotely tonight. And welcome all those who are participating by watching through YouTube. As a reminder, we welcome public comment and have provided a mechanism for you to make public comments by leaving voice messages to be played to the board and the public during our broadcast. If you wish to speak at a future meeting, please go to our public participation page on www.lbschools.net, which will give you more information about how to give public comments. As a reminder, in conformance with the Brown Act, when we hear testimony on an item that is not listed on the agenda, a full discussion of that topic would have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda. And in closed session today, the board voted to authorize payment of an award in case number 219-CV04496-ODW. The vote was conducted by roll call with members Benitez, Craighead, Kerr, and Miller voting to approve and member Otto approving. Okay. We go to public hearing. We have none. Call for separate items or for agenda items or separate action.
Move approval of the agenda.
I'm having trouble hearing. I'm sorry.
Second. So Board Member Kerr made the motion and I seconded, President.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. Opposed, abstentions, passes, five zero. Approval of minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. Opposed, abstentions, passes, five zero. Now, I'd like to introduce our student board member, Ms. Claire Phillips. So Ms. Phillips, if you'd like to give us a report at this time.
Okay, perfect. Hello, my name is Claire Phillips and I'm a senior at McBride High School. I'm here to talk about some of the activities that are going on at my school. Recently, I attended a restorative justice training. This training was to help students and faculty find a way to connect during the age of distance learning. In the student council, we have begun preparing for our Love Week activities. This year, the theme of Love Week is celebrating diversity. My committee is working on an interracial couple presentation along with the Valentine's Day card making activity via Zoom. In yearbook, our focus has been shifted onto the seniors. We have begun crafting our senior mob shots and senior superlatives along with working on the winter section of the yearbook. While club life at school has slowed down during, due to the pandemic, the multicultural club is pulling out all the stops for Black History Month with posting a new black figure on our club Instagram every day. There have been a lot of successes this year at school and I've experienced some personal successes as well. I've gotten, I've gotten into over five colleges and have received over half a million dollars in scholarships and grants. Thank you so much for tonight's opportunity to share our successes at McBride High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Would you like to share some of the schools that you're interested in?
From the ones I've got accepted into Chapman University and Spelman, but my dream school is Yale.
Well, we wish you all the luck in, you know, attaining that dream and we hope Yale takes you up on that offer to attend. Okay, next on the agenda, we have communications. So we are starting something new tonight. It was kind of born out of an effort to make a more student-focused agenda. And also, it seemed to me that we're having some pretty challenging times these last several months. And it would be nice to have a bonus feature on the agenda, something that would be a ray of sunshine on an otherwise cloudy day. So we're gonna have a celebration of either students, staff, or school. And so, Dr. Baker, would you like to introduce tonight's feature?
Sure. Tonight, you're going to get to meet Diego, who is a senior at Poly High School. He is a student who has been active in many things in Long Beach Unified School District. During the months of summer, he sat on the school reopening committee with Dr. Camarino. And he currently serves as the ASB president at Poly and sits as a student on the student, the superintendent student advisory committee. And so I had the opportunity, he had some really exciting news in his life, and so I had the opportunity to interview him, which we will be posting the entire interview of my time with Diego. But tonight, you're just going to get a snapshot. I promise most of these will not include me, but for today, we get a little snapshot of Diego through my conversation with him. I have the pleasure today of talking to Diego, a senior from Poly High School who also serves on the superintendent student advisory committee. So welcome, Diego.
Thank you for having me, Dr. Baker. My name is Diego Kagurabaza. Crazy long name, I know. And I am a senior at Poly. I also serve as the student body president there.
Excellent. You're a very involved Poly student. Before Poly, you attended elementary school at Twain and Bancroft, and then obviously you're in your fourth year at Poly. So I'm curious, just to start the conversation, tell me a little bit about what some of the things that you'll remember about school in Long Beach Unified are.
I think one of the things I'll definitely cherish forever is just the community that we really built in elementary and middle school. It's a really big district, but it always felt like there was a close-knit bond between everyone in the school, whether or not you had a class with them. It just felt like it was really easy to make connections with people because we all had very similar shared experiences.
So we would call you a well-rounded LBUSD graduate. You've certainly taken advantage of lots of opportunities and really grown as a student towards graduating and going on to college, right?
Definitely. I think the opportunities that this district provides are really incomparable to anything that my friends in other states have told me.
Are you, do you have a certain career in mind already, a career path maybe? Or are you just really open to what comes in front of you?
I am looking to major in political science. That seems to be where I'm heading. Philosophy, maybe if, I guess, Board of Government. I doubt that will happen. I don't want to commit to anything just yet, but I do really wish I could have a career in law or government policymaking at. Very ambitious, I know. So we'll see how things go, but I think this past year, all of the political drama that has happened has really made me a more active person in the political world.
Well, we are so proud of you in Long Beach Unified School District and are so excited to see what you do in the world. You have a bright mind and an amazing heart for the community and for what's happening around you and really a maturity beyond your years, as adults like to say. So thank you for being you, Diego, and for bringing your authentic self into what you do. It has been such a great experience to get to know you since last summer and to have you on my advisory committee. And I just can't wait to see what you go out into the world and do.
Thank you so much, Dr. Baker. It really means a lot.
Mrs. Craighead, I'd like just to encourage everyone to watch for the full video. Because Diego got into Stanford University as one of his university acceptances that he has received already. And one of the questions I asked him is to tell about how he learned of his admission into Stanford University. And it actually was a beautiful experience for him to tell the story of how he learned. It involves his family and his father. And he learned in the midst of a service experience that he was doing with his ASB group. And so just to, just to really think about, he was working with other students to help other students and finding out, and it's a, it's a really, really neat story. So I encourage you to watch for the rest of the video to come out. Fast forward through me and listen to him tell his story because it is a great story and another one of our students that we can be really, really proud of. So thanks for having the feature of Diego tonight.
Thank you. I don't know how we're gonna be able to squeeze in all the wonderful stories that we have, but it will be nice to have some featured stories so that we can enjoy all the wonderful things that are going on amongst everything else that we have. So thank you for that. Next on the agenda, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda. So.
We will play the messages.
Okay.
Hello, my name is John. I am calling regarding agenda item number 22, school reopening update. I am hoping that you extend management and CSOs and TOSS's clerical staff working from home until further notice until students return. Even if management were able to get their first vaccine shot, they're looking at another month till the next one. So I'm just calling, hoping that that can be extended to all staff since teachers are already and have been doing that from working from home. Thank you.
Hello, this message is for item 22 listed on the agenda. Good evening, board members and LBUSD leaders. I'm an LBUSD alumni, parent, community member, and I work in the field of higher education in the city of Long Beach. I'm calling on behalf of the school counselors and our Long Beach community. More often than not, counselor workdays extend far beyond their normal work hours. They have been working tirelessly to meet the needs of all their students and their families. One of the best ways that the district can support counselors during the pandemic is to allow them the flexibility to work from home. Counselors have been requesting to be allowed to work from the safety of their homes for the past nine months, but their voices have been muzzled. While the district office recently told principals that they could finally allow their counselors to work from home last week, and this week, many high school principals told their counseling staffs that they wanted multiple counselors on-site each day, even though none of their job duties require them to be on campus. However, counselors were given the reason that it was a busy time of year. Ironically, that exact reason is essentially why counselors should be given the flexibility to work from home while the students are still off campus. Spring semester is extremely busy and being able to do all of their duties from home will help counselors accomplish more each day. Once again, not one of the counselor duties being performed is in-person with students. Therefore, there is no reason to continue to have counselors come onto campus and work from their empty offices. The only things this accomplishes is that it puts more people at risk for spreading the virus, which prolongs students from returning to campus even longer and puts lives at risk. It also puts more strain on the custodians who have to clean their offices every day. It wastes cleaning supplies and electricity and thereby costs the district more money. Why would the district choose to do this? It costs nothing for the district to allow their counselors to work from home while the students are not on campus. In fact, it saves the district money and resources. Help stop the spread and support your counselors.
Hello, my name is Barry and this is for the board meeting, item 22 listed on the agenda under school reopening update. Good evening, Dr. Baker, LBUSD executive staff and Board of Education members. In light of it being National School Counselors Week, we are asking that you support your counselors during this pandemic. Alongside the teachers, counselors have had to transition quickly and turn all of their classroom presentations, counseling sessions, referral forms, verbal communication messages, student conferences, parent conferences, teacher conferences, class scheduling, and all of their typical in-person activities into a workable online format that meets the needs of every single student. Counselors have been conducting all of their job duties through Zoom, emails, and phone calls, yet they have not been extended the same flexibility that the teachers and nurses have had to work from home. Counselors are busier than ever handling their normal daily activities and duties while at the same time supporting significantly more students and families that need additional social and emotional support. Allowing all counselors the flexibility to work from the safety of their home until the students return to campus would help keep the employees that have to do their jobs on the school site more safe by reducing the amount of risk those employees face each day. In turn, this will push the virus numbers down, which will allow students to return to schools more quickly. It will also decrease the heightened stress of counselors from working about possible COVID exposure every day and will allow them to use more of their energy and resources for their students. Think about all of the extra time and money that is spent cleaning, sterilizing, preparing, driving, and getting ready to go into the office. It is more economical for the district and a more effective way to manage and promote social distancing with the employees on school sites to have counselors stay at home to do their work. Counselors are working around the clock, trying to meet the needs of all their students and their families. They consistently put in long hours because they love the students. They serve them and they want to continue to provide them with the best services possible. There's no reason to have counselors go into the school site to perform all of the same duties that they easily and safely can perform from their homes. Long Beach Unified Executive Staff and Board of Education, this is a low-hanging fruit and an easy solution that the district can provide to actively show they support their counselors and students they serve. It's a win-win situation for everyone. And such a small ask for a good of counselors that often remain overlooked. Please help support your counselors by allowing them the flexibility to work from home every day until it is safe for students to return to campus. Thank you for addressing the issue. Good night.
Hello, my name is Laura Robinson. I wish to address item number 26, closure of Beach High School. J. Board members and executive staff, I strongly urge you to vote no on the closure of Beach High School. Despite Beach's declining enrollment due to restructuring of Beach as a 10th grade and rejoining our campus, Beach will be a desperately needed educational option for the 21, 22 school year. We are currently experiencing the collective trauma of a global pandemic. Distance learning has led to negative outcomes for our most vulnerable students who we serve at Beach High School. Failure rates have exploded this school year since letter grades are required and longer synchronous sessions are happening for distance learning. Students who need credit recovery after this distance learning year will need Beach High School to address their needs. Learning loss is often quoted by executive staff, the governor, and those planning for when we return to in-person instruction. Summer school alone will not address the learning loss experienced by students. Traditional summer school only allows students to recover 10 credits. Although Apex or online summer school options will be available as well, they will not address the needs of students who failed during distance learning. More distance learning will not remedy failed distance learning. Beach teachers are uniquely equipped to transition students to in-person learning, help them recover credits, and instill a love of learning in students who previously gave up. The system failed them and distance learning continues to fail them. Beach teachers repair relationships first through restorative justice practices and trauma-informed education and work to instill a love of learning again. Students experience success and recognition at Beach when they have never experienced school success previously. I've had students tell me they've hated science their entire life or never been able to understand it, only to fall in love with science through accessible NGSS-aligned inquiry labs in my class. They have participated in multiple field trips, built a school garden, and felt like scientists in my class. Beach is a special community where students thrive. Beach serves the most at-risk, at-stormed, or whatever the current euphemism is for low-income BIPOC students whose needs are not met at traditional schools. I've heard executive staff and board members state they do not want to magnify inequities in the district. Closing Beach High School, where underserved students thrive, will magnify inequities like an electron microscope. Closing Beach High School when record numbers of students are failing traditional high school courses and distance learning is irresponsible and inequitable. Vote no on the closure of Beach High School and provide credit recovery options for students who need it most. Sincerely, Laura Robinson, Science Department head. Beach High School.
Good evening. My name is Robin Creason and I am an LBUSD teacher, a Wilson Elementary board member, and a former parent. I am calling today to just, to address item 22, reopening of schools. As a teacher, I want to be back in the classroom with my students. I miss them. The problem with returning is there is no plan, no PPE, no space, not enough vaccinated. I have 26 students in my class. My room is slated for 17. Do I need two rooms? Do students attend in cohorts? Who cleans and sanitizes? The only information we have are vague videos on vaccines coming soon. Teachers are working at their sites now and are directed not to gather, especially at lunch. Where do we eat? Take our restroom break? Where will our students be? We are lucky that Mayor Robert Garcia of Long Beach made vaccines available for teachers. I believe only 1,200, though. That number does not cover all teachers. District administration was nowhere to be found for information on the availability. Principals discouraged teachers from getting one. There was no leadership, no plan. Yes, we are talking about reopening? Teachers need more than 20 days to prepare. Teachers need vaccines. As a board member, I hear from.
My name is Mark Ennon. I'm addressing number 20, public testimony. As a teacher and father of a son who struggles with distance learning, I want school to reopen as much as anyone. However, we could now be at the beginning of the end of the worst pandemic in 100 years and we are now contemplating sending kids back to school? It is still too soon. Science and experience has taught us that when people gather in groups, in rooms, with uncirculating air, COVID spreads rapidly. Our infraction rates are at the top tier. This school board is holding a virtual meeting on whether we should send students and teachers back into classrooms. The people who will suffer most will be multi-generational families that live together and people that care for their parents and grandparents. Worst of all, it will be, not even be for regular instruction. Rather, it will be for partial days and partial weeks and crazy mixed-up schedules. Because of this, I ask that the board consider not reopening schools until it is safe for everyone. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Marie Gonzalez Burris. I'm a Long Beach Unified School District teacher and the parent of a Long Beach High School 2020 graduate. This call is in reference to item number 22, the reopening of schools. My main concerns are the poor communication to teaching staff, the lack of an adequate plan, and the poor rollout of vaccines for teachers. This is my 21st year teaching and is no doubt the most difficult year I've ever had. I so wish that I was back in my classroom with my students and things were normal, but they are not. The stress that this year has caused everyone is phenomenal. And now, as we are trying to finish up achievement reports and continue delivering quality instruction over Zoom, we're told that all elementary schools will be reopening March 1st. But that's all we've been told. There are no details of what this will look like, who will be going back, or expectations for getting rooms ready. This is not a kind way to treat staff. And what this does is create a very robust rumor mill. The lack of information is dumbfounding. I appreciate that this is a situation that none of us have ever found ourselves in before. But that then requires very careful planning and as much communication and transparency as possible. Teachers often find out more accurate information about our school district from Facebook than from our own administration. That is not right. As it currently stands, there seems to be, there seems to not be a clear plan on how schools would reopen. That is not unacceptable considering what the risks involved are. Please open communication with us. We need to know what your expectations are and we need to know with sufficient time, not find out days before or in an email sent out late on a Friday night. Last, it seems unconscionable to reopen before every staff member that wants a vaccine has had the opportunity to receive both doses. Even one death of a staff member due to COVID contracted at school would be one too many. As it stands, it's highly unlikely that all of our staff will be vaccinated before March 1st. After being told we'd be vaccinated at our own sites, we were then directed to the links for the city health department and only the quick few were lucky enough to get a vaccination appointment. There has been no follow-up from the district regarding what the rest of the plan moving forward with vaccinations will be. And this lack of communication is frustrating and demoralizing. What we need is clear communication to all the staff regarding what the reopening plan is with details, what the vaccination plan is for all staff. Please do not rush this reopen for everyone's sake. Thank you very much.
Tonya Zoranga, item 26, equity plan. Since there's little information on the equity plan, I cannot speak on the plan specifically, but I do believe this is about equity. I want to talk about the tale of two districts, the East Long Beach Unified School District and everywhere else. Why do students from West and North Long Beach have to go across town, like my board representative did when he was a student, to get what someone called, quote, "a good education"? Why couldn't Eric get one outside of East Long Beach and attend his area high school? Why are Cabrillo and Jordan the only low-performing high schools in the district, while all the high schools in the east side are high performers? It is not the neighborhood because we already know that our students in Area 1 and 2 also attend schools in the east side. It is not the parents because they make every effort to get their children a good education despite of economic and social barriers. The district should analyze why some areas are being left behind, areas like North Long Beach. During this time of focus on Black Lives activism, I would be remiss if I did not note that North Long Beach is also an area with arguably the largest African-American population. They also have the most concentration of low-performing schools. So I must ask, do black students matter to LBUSD? It appears that buildings matter. Jordan High School is looking great, yet have we looked in what's going on inside that building? I hope the leadership team, the board, or anyone concerned with our schools takes a closer look and asks themselves what the impact of community is in the areas of, one, teacher racial to students, teacher to student racial, number of A through G class offerings for the student population, collective offerings, number of experienced teachers, and where and how Title I dollars are being spent. Two, parents' choice, or as some call it, the LBUSD school placement system, filling east side schools with north side students with good GPAs, leaving the neighborhood schools to bright students that do not have transportation, our students who lack the grades to fill the vacancies in the east side schools. Three, school consolidations, enclosures, and the need to track where these students go and who goes where and why. I know that before COVID, the east side schools were losing attendance faster than other areas, so why were new schools built in the east side? Please take time to consider what decisions you make and the effects on equitable access to quality education and geographic discrepancies. Before I run out of time, I want to thank Board Member Craighead for her vote on the community, with the community on opposing the closure of Coverley and Hudson Middle Schools. While the rest of the board who voted for closure stated that they were doing it for the good of the district, you stated you were listening to your constituents. For that, we thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Christine Kelly, president of the Teachers Association of Long Beach. I'm addressing item 22 on the agenda, school reopening. Good evening to our Board of Education and executive staff. I speak tonight out of frustration and concern. The association is itching towards impasse in our negotiations with the district. We have not settled our contracts for 2019, 2020, and the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is rapidly approaching. We've had seven hundred and fifty of our teachers and classified employees working in person with students and families since July first, and somehow, the district could not prioritize vaccinations for those most vulnerable frontline workers. We've heard nothing of COVID testing. We have learned that Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools and Early Education, Brian Moskowitz, has all elementary principals preparing for schools to open on March first. That's just twenty-four days away. Now that we have vaccines, demanding teachers return to in-person instruction without providing them that protection is unconscionable. Schools are currently experiencing COVID-19 exposures and outbreaks without students on site. How can we tell our employees that it's safe to bring even more people on campus? I hope agreements can be reached this Friday. Impasse is not where we would like to be. We are better than this. We can reach agreements that put the safety of students, families, and our employees as a priority. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm calling because I'm a teacher in the district. I'm also a parent in the district. And I just heard that there's a push to reopen schools on March first. Frankly, I'm appalled that the safety of our students and staff is being taken so lightly when we have zero percent IECU capacity right now, and the fact that there are not enough vaccines to go around, and the fact that I'm also dealing with one of my very good friends who just lost her husband of the age of fifty-five last week because of COVID, and is left with two children who are school-aged herself to raise now. The fact that you would push teachers back into the classroom before they're vaccinated and ready, and before it's actually safe, and before there are ICU beds available, is appalling. I'm not sure who's responsible exactly for that decision or pushing that information out, but whoever it is, if you're in that room, I hope you take a moment to reflect upon how you will feel if people truly do get sick and die, because that is the reality of this virus. People get sick and people die. And our teachers, the majority of whom are in the age range where those things are truly medically a concern. So the push to reopen schools should be based on safety, should be based on data, and pushing when we're so close to having people vaccinated is absolutely irresponsible, and it is potentially deadly. And I don't say those words lightly. I say those words because, like I said, I'm just right now dealing with someone very close to me who has lost her husband and is left with school-aged children to raise. So let's be considerate of the reality of this deadly virus. Let's be considerate of the reality that we've gone this far and we're very close. And I'm not sure what the big push is, to hurry up and open when our teachers haven't been vaccinated and are not safe, but let's go ahead and consider everyone's safety and not just listen to the minority of people who are pushing for this potentially deadly reopening. Thank you for considering my comments. Thank you for listening. I appreciate that people care about lives and that people are considering the deadliness of the new variants coming out and the necessity of vaccinations before we put our staff in harm's way. And if the board members could also speak to our executive team about the messaging to teachers, I would appreciate it because many-
My name is Mary Cash. I wish to address reopening schools on March first for K-2. You must protect LBUSD teachers, staff, families, and students by keeping online learning in place until all are vaccinated against COVID-19. To date, less than one quarter of the twelve thousand-plus employees have been vaccinated. This is not acceptable for a safe return to in-person classes. Please know that opening up K-2 on March second, two thousand twenty-one, is not the answer. Too many teachers and frontline staff are not vaccinated due to low vaccine availability. It takes six weeks to be fully inoculated. Very few have been given the chance to start the process. Do not allow LBUSD to open any schools until all staff have the opportunity to be vaccinated. Please, as a classroom kindergarten teacher with over twenty-seven years in this wonderful district, protect the health of staff, families, and children. My health is at risk, along with too many other staff and children. Respectfully, Mary Beth Cash, teacher, Chris Elementary School, LBUSD. Protect us now.
Y buenas tardes. Soy la mamá de Jacob. Va en el kínder. Este, mi niño es alérgico y se me hace que es mejor que tome sus clases en casa, en escuela. Se podría contragiar más rápido. Es todo gracias.
Good afternoon. I am the parent of Jacob. He's in kindergarten, and he has allergies. I feel that it would be better for him to take his classes at home. He would be less, he would not contract the virus.
My name is Maria La Salgado, a press commissioner, business owner, and parent of two young learners. I'd like to speak on item twenty-two today, the opening update. It is a known fact the virus has disproportionately impacted communities of color, highlighting the longstanding inequities in our city. In zip code nine zero eight oh eight in suburban East Long Beach, residents have the highest life expectancy with an average of eighty-one years with lowest poverty rate at five percent. It also has the city's lowest rate of coronavirus infections, six hundred and sixty-seven per hundred thousand residents. By contrast, across town in a dense urban neighborhood nine zero eight one three, residents live an average of seventy-four years, the city's lowest life expectancy and nearly thirty-five percent live in poverty. It is no surprise it has the city's highest infection rate, over seventeen hundred per hundred thousand residents. It is not because East Long Beach residents are any safer. It is by design, density, demographics. One doesn't have the luxury to work from home, have a backyard, quarantine in a room, even stay home for lunch. Kids must exit to pick up lunch from school. Culturally, they are more likely to live with grandma and grandpa, multigenerational. Over the summer, a district survey showed white students feeling unmotivated, whereas our Hispanic Pacific Islanders and Black students face the challenges of sharing computers, finding a quiet place to work and caring for siblings. According to Long Beach Post, almost a third of our grades issued by Long Beach Unified Teachers in the first quarter of this school year were Ds or Fs, a massive jump compared to previous year. The district did not disaggregate the data by socioeconomic or ethnicity, but one can surmise that kids of colors are again being negatively impacted. The challenges are compounding. I'm not here to contest anyone's reasons for having their child attend in person. Every household has a story, including my friend who's a resident of nine zero eight one three who contracted COVID-19 by his wife who worked at a warehouse. Every day she went to work, every week, workers tested positive. He's a Spanish speaker, family man with two children, and a community leader. For his family, quarantine was impossible in a small one-bedroom apartment, so within a few days, all were COVID-19 positive, including his three-year-old. I asked him, would you like to return to school? His response, no. He worries he may not have a choice about returning if it were left to the district and the many parents who are answering these surveys. Like so many monolingual parents, language access, the digital divide, staying involved are real challenges. All, and why I must ask those who are listening to demand reopening is ignoring the disproportionate impact this virus is having in communities of color. Our district has not been able to proactively replace the old Chromebooks slides with a history of mics and connectivity issues who were predominantly provided to low-income households. And yet, here we're discussing reopening when we haven't even gotten the basics of distant learning right. As one parent put it, if the district has failed my child in distant learning, how can I trust the district to keep my child safe? At one school's school site in nine zero eight one three, sixteen percent or approximately a hundred parents have answered the survey, not enough. At a different site, one parent was told she had to get answered till February ninth. The district communications say February fifth. Should you extend the survey? Absolutely. Should you find new solutions? Absolutely. With today's technology and money, why can't the district find an automated solution to have parents answer by phone?
Hello, my name is Alexis, and I am commenting on Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, Staff Report About the School Reopening Update. I am calling because I am a teacher, and I understand the importance of students being in the classroom. I miss being in the classroom with my students. As much as I enjoy every moment I have online with them, that does not mean that I do not miss that in-person interaction. However, I deeply care about my students and their families, as well as my own family. And I do not feel it is in the best interest of anybody to reopen before it is fully safe. We can take steps, we can take steps to make reopening safer. One critical step is to wait until the virus is not as widespread. We are currently in the purple tier. And even with the new reopening number of twenty-five per one hundred thousand, that is still more than three times the amount for a county to be out of the purple tier. That means the virus is very widespread, and it is dangerous. Please keep in mind that a lot of the communities that are most highly impacted by this virus are communities served by our district. Another step is routine testing. There are so many asymptomatic carriers, and waiting until someone falls ill or possibly passes away is not a safe or best strategy. We need to address many issues like ventilation and filtration that is appropriate. Yes, disinfecting surfaces is important, but we need to keep in mind that the virus is airborne. So many people, so many communities have been ravaged by the effects of this virus. And I understand that a part of that fallout or difficulty is that we cannot be in the classroom at this moment. However, learning will not be improved in an environment that is unsafe. Please, I urge you to please consider waiting until it is safe for everyone. People are terrified for good reason. They have seen loved ones get ill with this, pass away, or have potential lifelong complications. They have seen it in their community. Please, I urge you to please reconsider and wait until it is truly safe for everyone. Thank you.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Juliana Martinez. Soy un padre de tres estudiantes del distrito de Long Beach.
Good afternoon. My name is Juliana Martinez. I am the parent of three students in Long Beach Unified School District.
Mis preocupaciones y comentarios que voy a hacer es lo siguiente. El primero, tengo preocupación acerca de que vayan a abrir las escuelas, ya que las vacunas no están siendo obligatorias para nadie y mucho menos para los niños.
My concerns and comments are about the reopening of schools. Vaccines are not being made mandatory for everyone, especially not for the students.
El número dos de mi preocupación es, ¿cómo se lleva a cabo las reuniones de las juntas directivas y del CAC, del board?
And number two, my second concern is the manner in which the meetings are being held, the board meetings and the CAC meetings.
Presiento que tenemos muy pocos padres de habla español, ya que las barreras son el idioma y la tecnología.
I feel that there's a very small amount of Spanish-speaking parents participating. The barriers for their participation is language access and technology.
Punto número tres de mi preocupación es, estamos llenando una encuesta par and view para ver si los niños vuelven a clase o se quedan en casa. Hay mucha confusión en ese par and view.
My third concern is that we are filling out a survey about the students returning to schools, and there is a lot of confusion about the survey.
Presiento que muchos padres estamos confundidos, ya que hay unas escuelas que ya cerraron la encuesta y no nos deja-
I feel that there's a lot of confusion among parents because a lot of schools have closed the surveys.
... y por el otro lado está confuso ese proceso. Gracias.
And we are not able to fill out the surveys, and the process is very confusing.
Madam President, that would be the thirty minutes of public testimony.
Madam President, can we extend time? I believe we had thirteen more minutes. Letitia, is that correct?
It's hard to say, but we have, um, one, two, three, nine more speakers.
So I would move to extend time to listen to the other of the comments on the items on the agenda.
Okay, um, do we have kind of a consensus on that?
A second.
Okay. Um, any discussion? So, Dr. Benitez, that was a motion, then?
Well, I mean, we've done it in the past as a motion, but if you, as President, I think you have authority to extend time if you'd like, Madam President.
Um, let's see. Well, if there's no, um, I don't know, if there's no contention on that, uh, I'm kind of looking to see how my fellow board members are feeling on that. So let's not waste any more time and go ahead and, uh, Letitia, there are nine more?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead with that.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Lilia Ocampo, y quiero hablar sobre la apertura de las escuelas. Yo tengo dos hijos de quinto grado en la escuela Oropeza, y-
Good afternoon. My name is Lilia Ocampo. I am commenting regarding the school's reopening. I have two students in the fifth grade at Oropeza.
Y mi preocupación es que vayan a abrir las escuelas cuando todavía no es seguro regresar.
And my concern is that the schools will reopen when it is still not safe to do so?
Considero que es muy peligroso que los niños se enfrenten o se expongan a enfermarse por adultos.
I believe that it is dangerous for children to be exposed to getting sick by the adults?
Que vayan a estar en contacto o vayan a traer la infección de otros adultos al compartir entre ellos. Es cierto que se van a tomar precauciones, pero no tengo la seguridad de que las escuelas estén-
And also the contact with others, they might bring infections home. I'm not sure about the safety protocols.
Están preparadas para abrirse todavía, y que van a tomar todas las precauciones y que los niños van a seguir las instrucciones claramente, ¿verdad?
I'm not sure if the students are prepared and they have the safety measures in place, and also that the students will follow the safety precautions.
Siempre existe el riesgo. Ahora en la comunidad más que nunca, las infecciones están creciendo en números, y hay muchas familias que han sido infectadas y que han perdido un miembro de su familia.
There's always a risk. In the community, there's a high rate of infection. There's families that have lost family members due to the illness.
... Por lo tanto, no considero que sea todavía seguro regresar a las escuelas. En lo personal, pienso dejar a mis hijos terminar el año escolar en línea. También me gustaría-
So I do not believe it is safe to return to schools, and I personally will continue with my children learning online.
... dediquen dinero suficiente para que las escuelas puedan tener personal para dar ayuda, consejería a los estudiantes, ya que muchos de ellos están siendo afectados emocionalmente.
Also, I would ask that the schools use money to have counseling support available because students are going through emotional difficulties?
My name is Gina Cantar. I wanted to go into the Agenda of Staff Report on the Session of School Reopening Update. I understand that we may be reopening our schools in possibly March. I wonder, though, if you realize what you are truly asking your teachers to do. We have had to relearn how to do our jobs in less than five months with very little and poor training. This relearning has affected our number-one priority, our students. When the pandemic first started, we all had crash course trainings in Google Classroom and Google Meet. Then, one week before school started, we had another crash course on a new program called Canvas, which we are still learning. Zoom was another platform that we had to learn on the job and to- and, to some extent, some of us are still learning how to utilize it better. Now with the possibility of schools reopening in March, once again, you will be asking the teachers to think outside the box and relearn how our profession can be remodified. Do you realize how much we will have to modify in-person teaching? What we once did and worked will no longer be the same. The simple procedures of passing out papers, sharpening a pencil, small groups, eating lunch, proximity, all take time to relearn and put into action. Another concern has to do with vaccines, teachers and students. We are not immune to getting sick. Please, give us that grace of getting vaccinated and having time to let the vaccine be in our systems to work effectively. As I mentioned at the start of this, I am not opposed to going back to work in person, but I need to feel safe. I need to feel a little more secure about going back. We will be going back into the classroom with up to thirty to one hundred students with different lifestyles. We have families who are still vacationing and not wearing masks that will be coming into our classrooms. What will happen is if and when we get sick, how would that benefit our students with the remaining few months, two and a half months left of school? I would personally feel much better if I knew in advance that I was going to be given time and the vital information of how to protect myself during in-person instruction. Our students are important and they are a priority. I understand that some of our students need to come back because of their emotional state. Our profession, however, is about teaching our students and while we provide emotional support, we are not psychologists and are not a match for what students may really need when it comes to their emotional state. During this pandemic, teachers should also be considered. We too are suffering loss, loneliness, frustrations, and overwhelming feelings. I often think about what schools was like during World War I and II and in the end, they are...
Hello, mi nombre es Ana Zaragoza y estoy hablando sobre el tema de reabrir las escuelas. La verdad, no estoy de acuerdo porque creo que todavía no es seguro.
My name is Ana Zaragoza. I am commenting on item about reopening the schools. I do not agree with it because I don't feel that it's safe.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
My name is Maritza Summers and I'm calling about an agenda item listed, sorry, an item listed on the agenda, item number twenty-six, new business equity policy. Hopefully that's correct. I'm a teacher in Doug Otto's district and I live in Megan Cur's district. I would like to say that as both a teacher and a parent, I'm disappointed that the district is even considering opening on March first for in-person instruction for TK through second and elementary. I know there is a school opening and safety plan and while that's all well and good to have a written plan, it's an entirely different beast when the rubber hits the road and that plan is put into action and we are not prepared to have children back in the classroom. The survey that has gone out to elementary school parents does not convey the fact that in-person means two and a half hours with the teacher and then picking your child up and taking them home for the rest of the instructional day. I also know we won't have plexiglass or other barriers in the classroom and I think that's something parents should be aware of before selecting in-person as their choice. I teach at the lower elementary level and I know teaching online is less than ideal, but I also know that shifting kids around when a school year is more than halfway over in order to balance the classrooms for in-person versus online instruction will be yet another disruption for students, parents, and teachers. How is that going to be handled equitably? How are we going to handle when a COVID outbreak occurs at a school site with children present? Again, I know that's in the school opening and safety plan, but that's going to be disruptive to many families, especially in situations where one sibling's class is in quarantine while the other is still going to campus. Again, I don't think this is going to go well. Let's also think about the reality of getting one hundred and sixty kids through a health screening every morning with handheld thermometers that are useless and don't have accurate temperature readings. And yet, this is what we're going to rely on when screening students every day in addition to hoping that their families are answering the health questions honestly. This is madness and I cannot wrap my head around how I'm supposed to continue teaching online daily, lesson planning, figuring how the schedule will go for in-person instruction, and get my classroom set up for the in-person instruction. Where is all this magical time going to come from? We should just continue to stay safe and teach online and not use elementary as the guinea pigs to implement the school opening and safety plan. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Francisco Javier Ramírez y estoy hablando sobre el tema de regreso a clase, que los niños vuelvan a la escuela. Y mi opinión sobre esto es que yo no estoy de acuerdo en que los niños estén regresando a la escuela porque ahorita como está la...
Good morning. My name is Francisco Ramírez and I am commenting about the return of students to school. I do not agree with this.
Con la pandemia se me hace como arriesgarlos mucho y mi opinión es esta, solo hablaba para comunicárselos y hacerlos saber. No estoy de acuerdo en que mi niño regrese a la escuela. Gracias.
And I feel it's risky, so I wanted to communicate this. I do not agree with students returning to school.
Hi, my name is Noel and I'm commenting on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two. I'm like everyone at the district anxious about the process of reopening. My main concern is student and staff safety. I want to be sure and confident that I can provide a safe learning environment for my students. And I know that this doesn't just apply to a classroom. It applies to my students' families, my colleagues and their families, and so forth. Also, for my students and for, oh, sorry, also with these decisions that are being made, are teachers and families being asked or consulted with? Is there a way that we can be consulted about these decisions? Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Valencia. I'm calling in regards to the reopening of schools. I would like to urge the district to implement a social and emotional curriculum policy requiring all teachers to incorporate social and emotional learning into their daily activities. The pandemic has had various ramifications for many students, effects that we are not even privy to yet. We cannot expect counselors to carry the full responsibility of addressing the mental health of an entire school. No doubt, this would require professional development for teachers. However, the potential for positive outcomes would move towards the district's goal of ensuring the academic success of all students. Thank you for your time.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Paula Martinez. Soy madre de un estudiante del distrito de Long Beach de Educación Especial. Mi niño es...
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Martinez. I am a mother of a student in Special Education in a Long Beach Unified School District.
Es un niño con una discapacidad severa, el cual tengo muchas preocupaciones sobre la reapertura de las escuelas. Quisiera...
My child has severe disabilities and I am concerned regarding the reopening of schools.
Comentar cómo se tomó en cuenta las preocupaciones de nosotros los padres de Educación Especial para esta reapertura.
I'd like to comment. How were the concerns of special ed parents taken into consideration for this reopening?
Nuestros estudiantes son unas de las comunidades que necesitan estas clases en persona, pero las cuales no nos han comunicado ni nos han dicho cómo será esta reapertura.
Our students are the population with the need of in-person instruction, but we have not been made aware of how this will take place.
Es una preocupación muy grande porque yo sé que un estudiante se beneficiaría mucho más porque ahorita no está teniendo aprovechamiento con las clases en línea.
This is a big concern because my student would benefit more with the in-person instruction. Right now, he's not taking advantage of the instruction.
Pero realmente es una preocupación muy grande porque es una de las personas muy vulnerables también al COVID por sus condiciones de salud también. Entonces, es muy preocupante esto sobre, no nos han preguntado... El distrito no nos ha dicho cómo será esta reapertura.
And so it is concerning because he's very vulnerable to catching COVID because of his health issues. So it's concerning that the district has not communicated with us as to how it will work.
Cómo es que se tomará en cuenta nuestras preocupaciones. Es todo lo que quería saber y quisiera ver si pudieran tomar en cuenta nuestras preocupaciones como padres sobre los niños en Educación Especial. Muchas gracias.
So the district has not considered our concern as parents, so we would like the district to consider us and those are my concerns. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Alicia Carrera. Vivo en el código postal noventa y ochocientas trece.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Alicia Carrera. I live in zip code nine oh eight one three.
Y me gustaría hacer un comentario, preguntar acerca de si ustedes como miembros de la mesa directiva, junto con lo que viene siendo las personas de las escuelas, que están trabajando en algún plan para reabrir y también...
So I'd like to make a comment. I would like to ask if you, as board members, are working with school staff on a plan to reopen?
Ustedes están viendo sobre las necesidades de que haya más consejeros en los lugares donde puedan ayudar con la salud social y emocional de los estudiantes ahorita en este tiempo de pandemia.
Are you looking at the need of more counselors to support the social and emotional health of students during the pandemic?
Desgraciadamente, el nivel de los estudiantes en cuanto a lo que es académico ha bajado tanto por el problema que viene siendo sus emocionales. El que ellos viven día a día, los problemas que se vive la familia, el sentirse...
Unfortunately, the students' academic level has dropped due to the emotions going on in their families.
Encerrados, la preocupación de que no entienden a sus maestros por qué están bajo estudios online. Esto viene dificultando grandemente. Desgraciadamente, nosotros como padres podemos ayudar a nuestros hijos, pero no nos podemos meter en su cabeza para...
So they are being kept inside. They don't understand what's going on with their teachers. Why are they having to learn online? So it is a difficult situation. We can support them, but we cannot go into their minds to figure out what's going on with them.
Provecharles o para trabajar con ellos sobre el miedo que existe dentro de lo que es esta pandemia. Entonces, mi comentario es ustedes realmente están trabajando en apoyar a los estudiantes de extremadamente bajos recursos. Cómo...
And so we can't get into their heads to ask what's going on with them or what's working for them, what are their fears during this pandemic? So my question is, are you working to support the students' emotions during the pandemic?
Cómo es que ellos están manejando esta situación de sus sentimientos, cómo se sienten viviendo en lugares tan pequeños donde muchas veces tienen que estar en el mismo cuarto dos, tres estudiantes porque los padres no...
To find out how they're handling their emotions, many times students are sharing very small spaces where there's two or three students learning at the same time.
Tienen un lugar para darles para que los cuadros estén bien. Cómo se sienten ellos emocionalmente de estar, digamos, encerrados porque...
So parents don't have an appropriate space to give them so they can learn, they can study. So working on how do they feel emotionally?
Desgraciadamente, existe el miedo de ver qué va a pasar si los niños salen y se pueden contagiar. A mí me gustaría mucho enfatizar en lo que viene siendo su salud mental y agradecería enormemente, miembros de la mesa directiva, que tuvieran un tiempo para reflexionar si realmente todos los estudiantes están a un mismo nivel.
So their students are afraid, they're afraid to go outside and get sick. So I would just like to emphasize the mental health. I would be grateful if you could reflect on the students and if they're all at the same level.
Si todos los estudiantes tienen el mismo éxito que otros estudiantes.
If they are all having the same success as other students.
Desgraciadamente, no vemos que se maneja la igualdad. Nadie tiene la culpa, obviamente, pero cómo podemos trabajar para que nuestros estudiantes tengan éxito, para que nuestros estudiantes puedan dar un paso menos en este tiempo de pandemia. Les agradecería mucho que trabajaran con los otros y nos apoyaran para que tuviéramos estudiantes exitosos, ya que nuestros niños vienen a ser...
Unfortunately, there's not equity all around, but that's no one's fault. So I would like for you to work on finding out how students can be successful, how can they move on during this pandemic, work with us to provide...
Para el futuro de este país, así que si trabajamos juntos...
To provide for the students because they are the future of this country and if we work together...
I think that's the end of the message and that concludes Agenda testimony. Thank you, Letitia. Next, we go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Barbara Odie. I live in District Two, area of Long Beach. I have two children enrolled in the school system. I participate in Parent, Teacher, Student Association and also the Long Beach Alliance for Food and Fitness. My concern is not today's agenda, but I hope you will address it at your next meeting. My topic of concern is distance learning impact on kids. The specific problem is lack of attention during school sessions. This impacts my child and others because if I can't seem to do other chores when school is in progress as my child's attention keeps drifting, it feels like I have to be with her throughout her school session and that also makes her feel a bit tense knowing I'm around all the time. I suggest the board consider an action such as providing me with tips on how to help my child focus in class and have fun while that's it. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Arla Lewis. You say on the tape to use language that's appropriate, excuse me, suitable for children. I agree with that. So how about taking an action that's suitable to the lives of your counselors? Why are you making them go back to work when their work can be done from home? You're putting people's lives, their very lives, at risk. That's shameful. They can do the work at home. You should allow them to work from home. Thank you.
My name is Gina Bonatardi Calabetti. This is an item that is not listed on the agenda for public comment. It's a sad day for me as a loyal employee of LBUSD when I quote the LAUSD Superintendent Austin Butner. How is it that Mr. Butner understands the severity of this pandemic and the risk of having teachers, staff, and students back on campus is too much of a risk without vaccinations? How is it that Mr. Butner understands that going through the waiver process for lower grades, elementary, is backwards, in quotes? And that the threshold for opening elementary schools is a magic number, in quotes, not adequately explained or justified? How is it that Mr. Butner understands and Dr. Baker does not, Mr. Moskowitz does not? It is still not safe and we are not out of the woods. Tuesday morning, I was informed that elementary schools will most likely open March first. This is without teachers being fully vaccinated and given the proper time for two doses and the two weeks after the second dose. The district couldn't prioritize CDC and Head Start teachers to be vaccinated and now it appears the district will not make elementary teachers a priority to get vaccinated before returning to in-person instruction. This is without an agreement between the union and the district. It sure does feel like the district is moving at a sloth pace to come to any type of agreement. This is without a clear, detailed plan put in writing for all stakeholders to process and get feedback on before implementation. Generalities on the district website does not give reassurance that the district will do what is needed and expected to keep employees safe in the event of a return to in-person. Again, how is it that LAUSD has the right idea of waiting and not putting anyone at risk for contacting the virus? And LBUSD is in a rush to open. Does say we did? How is it if I do not feel safe to return to in-person instruction? How do I respond to parents when they ask if it's safe for their child or children to return to school? I cannot.
Buenas noches, miembros de la junta. Mi comentario no está en la agenda. Mi nombre es Sarah Rodriguez, líder de Latinos in Action California.
Good evening, board members. Um, my comment is not in the agenda. Um, my name is Sarah Rodriguez, a leader with Parents Latinos in Action.
California, madre de dos estudiantes de grado tres y grado siete, uno de educación especial.
And also mother of two students, a third grader and a seventh grader, and one in special education.
Feliz mes de la historia afroamericana a muchos de los asistentes y los que escuchan en casa. Me gusta...
Happy Black History Month to, uh, those, uh, to everyone here and all those at home.
Quería solicitar que todos los miembros de la junta se reúnan como electores mensuales, especialmente...
I would like to ask that all board members meet with their, uh, voters monthly.
...durante este tiempo desafiante de aprendizaje a distancia. Los padres y estudiantes estamos luchando y sentimos que luchamos solos. Nos sentimos...
During this challenging, challenging time of distance learning. Parents, we as parents feel that we're fighting, but we feel that we're fighting alone.
No se contacto directo con nuestro representante de la Mesa Directiva. Queremos tener...
We don't have direct contact with our representatives at the, uh, Board of Education.
La oportunidad de ser vistas y escuchados. Queremos conocer a nuestro representante de distrito y espero que todos los miembros de la Mesa Directiva también quieran conocer a nosotros.
And, uh, we would like to, the opportunity to see, to be seen and be heard, to get to know our, our district representatives.
Otros los padres. Queremos que por medio de estos espacios podamos saber lo que está pasando en el distrito.
And we hope that our representatives can also want to meet us. Uh, we want to also get to know, um, uh, everyone, uh, through these spaces.
Que nuestra preocupación y temas de nuestro interés sean escuchados. Y más que nada, queremos crear ese vínculo importantísimo que logra mayor éxito también para los estudiantes.
Uh, to be, we also would like to be heard and most of all create a link, uh, with our, with our students.
Al ver la relación entre padres y representantes. Nuestra...
A link with our students when they see the, the relationship between the parents and the school representatives.
Organización está abierta a que empecemos esta oportunidad de colaboración y este, y este activa este mismo mes. Gracias.
Our organization is open to hold this kind of collaboration and we hope to, and it's active this month.
Gracias por su atención. Mi nombre es Sarah Rodriguez.
Thank you for your attention. My name is Sarah Rodriguez.
Feliz noche.
Good evening.
Marta Cota solicitando reuniones comunitarias. Buenas noches, miembros...
Marta Cota requesting community meetings.
De la Junta Directiva. Mi nombre es Marta Cota. Mi comentario no está en la agenda.
Good evening, board members. My name is Marta Cota. My comment is not on the agenda.
Soy fundadora y director ejecutiva de Latinos in Action California y abu...
I am the founder and executive director of Latinos in Action California.
Abuela de dos estudiantes de este distrito.
And I am the grandmother of two students in this district.
Primero quiero dar gracias a Dr. Juan Benítez por organizar reuniones comunitarias por la plataforma Zoom con sus constituyentes del distrito.
First of all, I'd like to take, thank Dr. Juan Benítez for holding, uh, virtual, uh, community meetings via Zoom.
Distrito número tres. Reuniones mensuales donde se abre el espacio para que los padres expresen sus inquietudes, preocupaciones y más que nada donde ellos se sientan seguros y libres de poder expresarse y hablar de temas de interés.
Um, in, in, for District Three, uh, the meetings are held monthly and parents, um, can express their, their concerns and they, uh, feel safe, uh, to, to speak about, um, any, um, concerns.
Por lo tanto, invito a cada uno de los miembros del board a que hagan estas reuniones comunitarias en sus propios distritos.
So I invite all board members to hold these type of community meetings for their districts.
Una magnífica manera de comunicarse donde los padres se sientan escuchados por ustedes como representantes de su distrito.
Isn't it, it is an excellent way for parents to feel heard by the representatives of their districts?
Estamos en un tiempo crítico y desafiante donde tanto los padres como los estudiantes están en lucha de barreras sobre el aprendizaje a distancia, de la tecnología, la intimidación de los dueños de edificios queriendo desalojarlos y...
We are in a, a critical and challenging time for students and for parents. They are fighting different barriers, technology, um, also where their landlords are trying to, um, have, trying to get them to move out of their homes.
Y el terror de infectarse del virus y no poder cuidar a sus hijos. Se sienten solos y ellos quieren ser escuchados por ustedes como representantes del distrito.
They feel, uh, they have a fear of contracting the virus, uh, they feel alone and then they want to be heard by, by their school representative.
Y hay varias razones por las que es importantísimo iniciar estas reuniones comunitarias. Entre ellas sería mostrar la transparencia de lo que está sucediendo en el distrito y los padres lo quieren escuchar de ustedes.
And there are, there are several reasons why it is important to hold these community meetings. Uh, transparency is one of them and, uh, uh, parents want to hear directly from the district.
Los padres quieren conocer su representante de distrito y espero que también ustedes quere conocer a los padres.
Parents want to get to know their district representatives and I hope that you also want to get to know the parents.
Es bueno también porque crea vínculos de comunicación abierta donde los padres pueden hablar de temas relevantes.
And it's also a good idea because it's, uh, an open communication link where parents can openly speak about their, uh, concerns.
Y otra muy significativa, crear relaciones entre ustedes, la comunidad y organizaciones como Latinos in Action que siempre estamos abiertos a apoyar y crear espacios de comunicación y colaboración.
And also, um, it creates relationships with organizations like Latinos in Action who are always willing to collaborate.
Esperamos consideren esta importantísima manera de comunicarse con los padres y estamos en solidaridad con ustedes. Marta Cota. Muchas...
We hope that you will consider this manner of communicating with you and we are in solidarity with you, Marta Cota.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Buenas, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Juana Castellanos.
Good afternoon. My name is Juana Castellanos.
Solicitando reunión comunitaria de, con el señor Miller. Mi nombre...
Um, I am requesting a community meeting with Mr. Eric Miller.
Three. Es Juana Castellanos. Mi comentario no está en la agenda. Soy líder de Latinos en Action California.
My name is Juana Castellanos. My comment is not in the agenda. I am a leader, eh, with Latinos in Action.
Y madre de tres estudiantes, nueve, ocho y doce grados.
And mother of three students, ninth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth grade.
Feliz mes de la historia afroamericano para todos los asistentes.
Uh, happy Black History Month to all in attendance.
Y los que escuchan en casa. Permítame comenzar a agradecimiento enorme en el miembro de Mesa Directiva, Dr. Juan Benítez.
And for those who are, um, listening from home, uh, let me begin by, uh, thanking, um, board member, uh, Dr. Juan Benítez.
Por organizar reuniones comunitarios a sus electores de su distrito tres.
Uh, for organizing community meetings with, um, the voters in District Three.
Tengo familiares que acudieron y dicen que les dio autor, autorización sobre el distrito que pudieron hacer preguntas por lo que yo le pido a nuestro representante de el...
Um, I have family that attended the meeting and they said that, um, he shared updates, uh, within the district and I am asking...
Distrito dos, el señor Eric Miller. Y a todos los que todavía no siguen esa buena práctica que empezó el doctor Benítez que empiezan a organizar ese tiempo de reunir aunque sea mensualmente. Estoy segura.
Um, and, uh, I would like to ask the representative, our representative in District Two, Eric Miller, to, uh, begin to hold these type of, uh, uh, community meetings and I also am asking that all other, uh, board members, uh, begin to practice these, um, community meetings.
Estoy ayudando muchos que a nosotros. Estoy seguro que ayudará mucho a nosotros como padres. Nos sentimos libres de hablar del tema que nos interesa y nos preocupa.
And I, I, I am sure that it will help all of us as parents because we feel free to speak about, uh, our concerns.
Voy de comunicarse con nuestra organización. Podemos colaborar para hacer juntos esto espacio para nosotros.
You can communicate with our organization. We can collaborate to create these spaces for us.
Muchas gracias, Juana Castellanos. Feliz día.
Uh, thank you very much, Juana Castellanos. Happy day.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es María Pérez y comentario es un tema que no está en la agenda de líderes de Latinos in Action y madre de los estudiantes. Soy...
Um, good evening. My name is María Pérez. My comment is, uh, not on the agenda. I am a parent of two students.
Madre de estudiantes de cuatro y seis grados. Me gustaría solicitar a los miembros de la junta que representan a todos los distritos, organizan...
Um, students in the fourth and sixth grade, I would like, like to request that all the board members that represent the districts...
Sigan dando reuniones como itallas por lo menos una vez al mes para man...
That you hold community meetings at least once, once a month.
Al tener informado a los padres y comunidad sobre lo que está sucediendo en el distrito escolar.
To keep the parents and community informed, informed of what is happening in the district.
Hmm, dado que todavía estamos experimentando una pandemia, tener reuniones comunitarias es fácil y hacerlos virtualmente, los cuales se darían...
Because we are still going through a pandemic, having virtual community meetings are easy to hold.
Tan a construir, mantener relación entre representantes de cada distrito y escucha...
And it helps to build and maintain a relationship with our district representatives.
Char diferentes los temas que son importantes para nosotros y todos nuestros. Creo que esto también...
And it's a way for, um, for you to listen to our, to the, the things, the things that matter, uh, to us.
Ayudar a mejorar la transparencia con los padres del distrito.
They would help to improve transparency with parents in the district.
Gracias por escuchar mi sugerencias. Espero consideren conversar entre todos los miembros del board. Atentan...
Thank you for help, for listening to my suggestions and consider, uh, speaking about this among board members.
Amente María Pérez.
Sincerely, María Pérez.
Gracias.
From your radio's rank, items not on the agenda. I first want to welcome the new board members and I know they will serve the community well. I want to, but I want to provide you with a little history and the purpose of this information is to let you know how far LBUSD has come or in some cases, at least in terms of representation, how far they still need to go. Long Beach historically has been called Iowa by the sea. The board has reflected that label well. As the city grew more diverse, the district board did not. In fact, the city and its institutions reflected a stronghold on the influence of white supremacy and institutional racism, ideas that hold strong today. The great Mary Butler, a black woman, ran in nineteen seventy-four. She was a champion for the community and because of that, a school was named after her. However, she was never able to win a seat on the board. Fourteen years later, the community pushed for and won district elections and the five LBUSD areas were formed. As a result, Jenny Orapesa and Bobby Smith were elected to the school board in nineteen eighty-eight. The first members of color, men or women, to be elected after a hundred and three years of the district's existence. Area three was considered the Latino seat and area two was considered the black seat. A labelless seat still holds today despite changing demographics. When Jenny went to the city council in nineteen ninety-four, Olivia Reta ran. Olivia served as the director of Central Shalom, a community center that served the poor and disenfranchised. Badi Lawenthal entered the race and won. Olivia also had a school named after her, but she never served on the board either, leaving no Latino on the board for over two decades. The city grew more diverse as did the school district in what is now eighty-seven percent students of color. In twenty fourteen, a black man ran for area one, as did a gay man, our most diverse set of candidates, as did Megan Kerr, who won the election to represent what is arguably the district with the highest African-American population. The belief that area two is a black seat and area three is a Latino seat has been challenged by the election of a Cambodian in the central area council, uh, city council and the move of demographics in the north with the election of two black council members representing North Long Beach. In twenty eighteen, Juan Benítez won the election to the board in a second attempt and won, giving the community of the second Latino in LBUSD history in twenty-four years after Jenny, twenty-four years after Jenny served. I tell you to, you just to show that things are slow and changing and it's reflected on the board, staff, and decisions taken in LBUSD. While the district speaks about how to be LBUSD, it has a long way to go to reflect the Long Beach we all know and love. To the new school board members, I ask for you to speak, please, for your community and for the diversity of this great district. I wish you the best of luck and I wish you well. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. This is Dr. Kim Tabari. Happy Black History Month to everyone in attendance and those listening at home. Thank you to the board members that consistently meet with small groups of parents like the LCAP group or with me and my team as members of Black Lives Matter Long Beach to build a working relationship between parents and the district. And thank you to District Three board member for holding monthly meetings with your constituents. I would like to request that all board members meet with their constituents on a monthly basis, especially during this challenging time of distant learning. Parents and students are struggling and would like the opportunity to be seen and heard by their district representatives. Parents want to get to know their district rep and I hope you all want to get to know parents who you represent. So I want to offer three specific reasons for meeting with your constituents. One, transparency. We want to know what's happening. We want to hear it from you of our district rep. Two, open communication. Let's be intentional and talk about issues that are important to parents. Three, relationship building between the district, between the community and you, their elected board representative. We hope to see immediate action starting this month if possible in the other districts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Krip and I'm commenting on item number twenty-one, items not listed on the agenda. My comment today is to strongly encourage our board and district staff to encourage those families that are able to stay home with their students to continue online education when the district opens for in-person learning and leave room for those unrepresented, unrepresented families and students that need to work. I want the district to protect our students with our in-person learning moving forward. Unfortunately, for people can't afford to get sick, unlike our, our more affluent neighborhoods. I'm also encouraging the district to ensure our kids are connected and have the most appropriate technology for distance learning. Um, thank you so much for your time and your hard work moving forward in reopening and continuing to keep our students and teachers safe through this pandemic.
Hi, my name is Linda Westermeyer and I am leaving a comment for a non-agenda, um, item for tonight's board meeting on February third, two thousand twenty-one. I have been a teacher for Long Beach Unified for twenty-one years. I love teaching. I wish this pandemic was over and I was back in the classroom, but it's not. And now it is unfair and unsafe for teachers to go back on March first. Teachers who were teaching from home were told not to get the vaccine by the district and leave it for the Long Beach Unified employees who are already in person or teaching from school. Only fifteen hundred Long Beach Unified employees have gotten their first vaccine shot. Now you are saying the teachers who are teaching from home, the ones who did not get the vaccine, need to go back on March first. How is that fair? How is that safe? All teachers or Long Beach Unified employees should get the opportunity to be fully vaccinated before they go. should get the opportunity to be fully vaccinated before they go back to in-person. It is the right thing to do, it keeps teachers and their families safe. My own children safe, my students in my class that I care about safe, their families safe. Please, safety first. We are so close to the end of this as the vaccine has been started to being distributed. Please, do not make teachers go back on March first until they are fully vaccinated, thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Griselda Soto y mi tema es eh, la tecnología.
Good afternoon, my name is Griselda Soto and I'm, uh, my comment is regarding technology.
Este, mi nombre es Griselda Soto, yo vivo en la ciudad de, de área de la Pacífico, en Long Beach. Tengo tres niños en el distrito de Long Beach, Pedro, Gracito, bro-
Um, I live in, uh, in P- on P C H in Long Beach, I have three students, Pedro, who attends-
Hello, my name is Alexis and I am commenting on an item not listed on the agenda. I would like to comment on special education. I am a teacher. I would like to ask that you please consider the very specific details of our population, of these wonderful populations that we serve. So many times I have heard the district talk about how they want to serve our quote media students, unquote. Please follow up on that. Part of that, a huge part of that is safety. Please consider that many of the safety protocols that are being put in place for the potential reopening may not be suitable in all settings. What will happen in those settings? How will teachers and staff be expected to handle this? When will they receive this guidance? Will it be safe for all? Will it be feasible? Will we receive the resources and support necessary to support our students, whether we are online or in person? Please, when you talk about our quote media students, unquote, please take into consideration all of those details. And a huge part of that is reaching out and talking to the teachers who interact with these students every day. They know them the best. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Maria Lasangado, I'm here to speak on non-agenda item. Happy Black History Month to everyone in attendance and those listening at home. I know that you all want the best for our children and families in our district and it's both big and small things that make this a possibility. For the course of the year, I've had the ability to virtually meet or email school board members, in part because of the advocacy work I'm involved with. You all make decisions on behalf of parents, community stakeholders and teachers, and I'm very appreciative of your time. To my surprise though, not every board member provides the time to meet with their constituents, particularly in such, such an unprecedented time. Yesterday I had the chance to meet with board member Benítez as he hosted an English and Spanish virtual meetup for his district. Thank you, sir, and I want to applaud your efforts. Parents were able to share their concerns about the push to reopen schools, concerns about parent view navigation, lack of supervision by teachers in their children's class and much more. It was a great opportunity for dialogue and for parents to hear directly from their, their representatives. Today I'd like to encourage the other board members to host similar meetings in their district to build a relationship between the community and their elected board representative. During these difficult times, these small acts are needed to help families feel seen and heard. Language access and technology make it difficult for some parents to participate and encourage board members and the district to continue to engage parents, disaggregate data and find a gap to seek input from those not present. I hope to see immediate action in future presentations regarding disaggregating data and virtual meetups by board members in their respective di- districts. Parents want to be heard, thank you and good night.
Buena tarde, miembros de la mesa directiva, mi nombre es Alicia Carrera y vivo en-
Good afternoon, uh, board members, my name is Alicia Carrera.
Código postal noventa ochocientos tres cinco.
I live in zip code nine oh one three.
Y me gustaría hacer comentarios acerca de lo que viene siendo lo que es la salud mental en este tiempo de pandemia y la necesidad de tener más tutoría para, o tutoría para los estudiantes.
I would like to comment on the mental health i- uh, issues during the pandemic and also about offering more tutu- tutoring for the students.
Ah, me enfoco en hablar sobre salud mental porque en este tiempo de pandemia estamos viendo que en todo lo ancho de lo que viene siendo la ciudad de Long Beach, los estudiantes necesitan, necesitan tener-
Um, in all of Long Beach, students need-
Una forma de expresar sus sentimientos conforme a lo que está sucediendo, desgraciadamente-
Students need a means to express their feelings with everything that is going around, going on around them.
Solamente en este momento es muy difícil que uno como padre encuentre recursos para sus hijos, ya que desgraciadamente-
During this time, it is difficult for us as parents to find reses- resources for our students.
Que yo hablo por mi propia persona, el tratar de encontrar servicios que ayuden con la salud de mi hija ha sido un poco difícil.
I'm talking about myself, trying to find resources for my daughter's uh mental health has been difficult.
Pero lo imposible porque lo he logrado a través de la escuela, pero si yo he batallado yo me voy a pensar cómo otros padres tienen esta necesidad.
But it has not been impossible with supports from the school, but I think about other parents who are not able to uh find these resources.
La situación es que desgraciadamente por lo que está ocurriendo con la pandemia, muchos estudiantes han estado cayendo en depresión y esto ha hecho que su nivel de aprendizaje baje demasiado, entonces-
So the situation is uh, that unfortunately because of the pandemic, a lot of students have been falling into depression due to uh, to the pandemic.
Desmípre, más bien me gustaría como dejarles saber qué van a hacer ustedes para ayudar a los estudiantes que están teniendo esta situación, cómo van a trabajar para que se impulse a que se eleven los estándares de educación para estos, para todos los estudiantes. Me gustaría mucho que-
So I would uh really like to know how you will be supporting these students that are going through this situation? How will you promote their, an increase in their academic levels?
Se pusiera o se enfatizaran apoyar más en cómo van a trabajar con los niños, la otra cosa es cómo-
I would like to have an emphasis on ex- uh, and explaining how you will be working with the students.
Van a tener alguna forma de tener más personas que ayuden con los estudiantes en las escuelas o tal vez en línea.
Will you have more staff that will support the students at the schools or maybe online?
Ese es mi, me estoy enfocando en ese comenta, en esa, en, en ese comentario con ustedes y me gustaría también dejarles saber preguntarles cómo es que ustedes están trabajando para reabrir las escuelas, están pensando a qué nivel los estudiantes se sienten en peligro, en peligro de regresar o a un-
So I would like, uh, you, my, my comment was focused on, on this and also I would like to know how are you working on reopening the schools?
Como padre, cómo le van a asegurar que sus hijos van a estar bien dentro de las escuelas.
As a parent, how will we be ensured that our students will be safe i- inside the schools?
Gracias con mucho, buenas tardes.
I am very grateful, good afternoon.
Madam President, um, we have reached the thirty minutes and we have three more speakers left. Okay, let's go ahead with the uh last three.
Okay.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Marta Cota y mi comentario es acerca de-
Good morning, my name is Marta Cota.
De la instrucción virtual, uh, que están pasando pues los estudiantes, verdad?
My comment is re- is in regards to the virtual instructions that the stu- that the students are um doing right now.
Eh, Marta Cota de Latinos in Action y pues estoy trayendo la voz a las familias que no alcanzaron a hablar este, esta mañana, este día y están preocupados-
I am from Latinos in Action and I am bringing the voices of the families that were not able to participate this evening.
Los acerca de la instrucción virtual, como ya antes lo hemos hablado, eh, esto no se ha mejorado, los padres siguen teniendo, uh, problemas, verdad, con los dispositivos, con-
So, um, the comment is in regards to ver- virtual instruction, uh, the, the issues with the uh technology have not improved. Parents are still facing different connection issues.
Los hotspots y, y es algo pues muy frustrante tanto para los padres como para los estudiantes y mucha-
They're facing difficulties with the hotspots and it's uh frustrating for parents as, as well as for the students.
Muchas veces se quedan a la mitad de sus, um, de sus tareas o también de la misma instrucción que están dando los maestros por no tener, uh, buena, buenos hotspots, verdad, entonces quieren-
Um, oftentimes the students um are, are frozen in the middle of doing their homework or in the middle of instruction because the connection is not good.
Queremos traer esto de nuevo, de nuevo traerlo con ustedes, eh, creo que es mucho tiempo que hemos hablado lo mismo, la instrucción virtual, eh, también los estudiantes no están aprendiendo lo que los estándares académicos están diciendo.
So we are bringing this issue up again, we've talked about this uh many times. There were also, um, concern because students are not learning the academic standards.
Eh, es algo pues que realmente yo no sé ya qué decirle a los padres, verdad, porque lo hemos hablado, eh, mucho tiempo.
Uh, this is something that where I'm finding myself unable to, I don't know what to say to the parents because we've been talking about this for a long time.
También esto lo está afectando emocionalmente, emocionalmente a los jóvenes porque se sienten que, que son tontos ellos dicen, creo que yo soy tonto, no estoy aprendiendo, ta-
This is also affecting uh the students emotionally because they feel dumb, they, they, they think I'm dumb, I cannot learn.
Tantas cosas que ellos sienten dentro de ellos por, por no estar teniendo una buena instrucción, verdad, entonces-
They have so many feelings inside of them because they are not receiving um appropriate instruction.
Les dejo aquí en sus manos a todo el board, eh, que consideren esto, fíganlo considerando. Eh, sé que pronto van a abrir las escuelas, pero muchos padres están optando por, por seguir con sus niños, uh, que tengan su estudio en línea, eh.
So I am leaving this up to the board to uh, uh, consider this, uh, but many parents are opting for remaining um with instruction online.
Y va a ser lo mismo, tener buenos hotspots, eh, tener, um, pues los dispositivos, buenos dispositivos que, que tengan una buena conexión, verdad, con las redes, esto va a ser pe-
So they, they will need the same, they will need good hotspots, good devices with good connections.
Primordial, eh, qué más les puedo decir, de parte de los padres están tan preocupados ellos también porque tienen miedo que cuando les hagan el examen eh, los niños pues realmente no estén, um, respondiendo adecuadamente por no, por estar quedando atrás con la enseñanza, verdad, y pues-
So, uh, this is, uh, these, uh, devices are essential and so parents are concerned because when it comes to testing, uh, they fear that students will not know how to respond.
Por eso es importante que se haga, eh, que haga un recuento de lo que los niños han perdido en, en el aprendizaje y no tanto para castigarlos por no tener buenos grados, sino para saber nosotros dónde vamos a empezar eh, con, con la tutoría, con, con el apoyo para los niños, para que realmente se vayan poniendo a lo mejor no al cien por ciento al nivel, pero que este, sepamos qué es lo que realmente quedó en esta pandemia con todas las frustraciones, con todas las, las barreras que hubo, eh, que los niños realmente no aprenden.
Uh, so we, it's important that we have a, um, a study, a recount of the learning and it's not to punish the students, but, but it's to, so that we can begin to provide support to bring them up to the levels that they need to uh be in, to study the consequences uh from the pandemic, uh, also the frustration.
Buenas tardes, este, miembros del bo- de board, mi nombre es Guillarmina Cruz, madre de-
Good afternoon, board members, my name is Guillarmina Cruz.
De dos estudiantes del nueve y doce grado.
Um, I am a mother of two students in the ninth and twelfth grade.
Miembros de Latinos in Action y nomás quería decirles que sigo preguntando y preguntando lo mismo sobre la instrucción virtual, que no-
Um, and I am also a member of Latinos in Actions, in, in Action and I'm all, uh, asking the same thing. I keep, I continue to ask the same thing about the virtual instruction.
No ha mejorado, estudiantes frustrados con la enseñanza que están recibiendo. No están aprendiendo lo que es, lo que los estándares piden y esto-
Um, the students are, are not improving, they are frustrated with the learning, they are not learning what the standards require.
Esto perjudica mucho su estado emocional, por lo que pido a todos ustedes que ya se pongan en acción, por favor.
This affects their emotional state, I ask you to take action.
Que aquí los estudiantes son los que están quedando atrás, gra-
The students here are the ones falling behind.
Gracias.
Thank you.
My name is Gina Alcantara and this is an item that's not um listed on the agenda. Um, I am here because I love to teach. I wish I could return to teaching in person, especially this year because it is my first year as a first grade teacher and the little ones make me laugh every day. I need this laughter because this year has been, really been full of extreme changes. I understand that we may be reopening our schools in possibly March. I wonder though, if you realize what you are truly asking your teachers to do. My biggest concern is, um, really the lack of communication. We are the teachers who are at the trenches every day, working and trying to teach during the pandemic. Yet, we are the last to be informed about what procedures and guidelines need to take place during pandemic teaching. We are the ones that will have to teach in person with major modifications that need to be worked out before students come back into the classroom. Please start rolling out those guidelines, protocols now. Please give us information in a timely manner and not minutes before it becomes public. Our custodians and office staff seem to know more than the teachers. Admin needs to find a way to give this information to all of us at the same time. This makes me, um, you are asking us to be extremely flexible, yet we are not given that same flexibility by admin and upper admin. This makes me feel disrespected as a teacher and it disrespect, disrespects my profession. Our students are important and they are a priority. I do understand that some of our students need to come back because of their emotional state. Our profession is about teaching our students and while we provide emotional support, we are not psychologists and are no match for what students may really need when it comes to their emotional state. During this pandemic, teachers should also be considered. We too are suffering loss, loneliness, frustrations and overwhelming feelings. I often think about what schools was like during World War One and Two. In the end, they all did okay because they were all going through the same thing. The whole world right now is going through the same thing. We will be okay, the whole world is going through a pandemic. If we allow some grace to our teachers to think about what they need to do to make things happen for the remaining twenty half months of school, we will be okay. If we don't return to the building this year, we will be okay too. Why are we rushing through the reopening? When we do reopen, I ask that you make our administrators, give us that grace to re-modify our profession. Um, we, you know, yet again this year because we've had to change it so many times already in the last five months. Our teaching profession, I know, will never be the same, the way we used to teach will-
That is the end of the public testimony, Madam President.
Thank you, Letitia, um, I-
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but uh, I'd like to uh comment because several of the public comments that were uh made reference me specifically by name and, and I wanted to address uh that. Um, as, as many of you know, I've been hosting and holding community virtual office hours, just trying to find creative ways to engage with community members uh in my district. And the purpose of those office hours is basically four. One is for me to be able to provide general updates uh about our school district. The second was to provide an opportunity for uh members of our communities to ask me uh general questions, uh, right? Uh, the third was to be able to connect, um, not just between myself and our community members- Uh, the third was to be able to connect, um, not just between myself and our community members, but amongst themselves, given that we don't have, uh, very many opportunities to connect. And we certainly are not able to connect in person in ways that we have before. And so as part of that, the idea was to build community. And I was just trying to be creative, uh, in how, uh, we were able to engage. And, and I've been doing that for several months. Uh, but never has my intent, uh, been, nor do I support, nor do I encourage public comment being used to pit board members against each other or to try and use it as an opportunity to show up, uh, my colleagues, uh, here. Uh, particularly, uh, for our new school board members, I, I, I want to highlight that. Given that President Craighead, you have a long history of involving, involvement and engaging with your stakeholders in your district. Uh, Board Member Kerr, uh, you belong to so many organizations, you're in so many spaces. So again, uh, you're, you're engaging in ways that, uh, best, uh, work, uh, in this pandemic. And I know that, uh, new board members Otto and new board members Miller, again, you come with experiences, uh, with your own ways of, of, of being creative and finding ways to engage with community members. So I just felt compelled, uh, to say that. Uh, I don't put up, uh, parents that I speak with or community members to, uh, gum, come give public comment. And because my name was specifically referenced, um, and, and other board members' names were referenced, uh, I wanted to make sure, uh, to highlight, uh, that that is not the intent of my community, uh, virtual office hours. Um, of course, I always encourage everyone to submit public comment and to participate and engage. But I don't think it does me nor my colleagues, uh, any good, uh, to try and use public comment. And, and again, anyone can comment, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that that is not the intent of my virtual office hours. Um, and, uh, nor do I encourage or support, um, community members trying to pit either board colleagues or executive staff, uh, and board, uh, or show up, uh, board members using me, uh, as, as an example. So, uh, I wanted to express that, given that, um, my name was referenced specifically, uh, President Craighead.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. At this time, I'd like to propose a break and we will reconvene at seven o'clock. We have a few minutes stretch, get a drink of water or something, but we will reconvene at seven o'clock. Thank you, everyone. Um, next on the agenda is our staff report, so we'll get right to it with Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mrs. Craighead. So I'm pleased to introduce tonight's school reopening update with two topics that will be addressed by Mr. Moskowitz and Dr. Heenan and Dr. Brown. Uh, the two topics are, we're going to have an update on the collaborative co-teaching model um, and the implementation of students going back into in-person instruction for the collaborative co-teaching model. And then Dr. Brown is going to do an update on the criteria for reopening schools and address, um, actually address many of the things that were stated in public comment to provide some clarification for those as well. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Moskowitz and Dr. Heenan.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, President Craighead and members of the board. We're excited to be here with you today. Um, I, I know in the meetings leading up to this, uh, board meeting tonight, we heard from different stakeholders about the pre-K CCT program. And we thought it was important to circle back now in its third week of implementation and share, uh, really how well it's going. Uh, we've got some great videos and things we'd like to share with you. So I'm going to ask, um, our multimedia team, I know we've got our, um, slide deck up. There we go. So I want to start, um, we're going to talk broadly about this idea of the collaborative co-teaching. I want to give some background and some perspective. But I really want, before we jump into the CCT program, I want to ground us in this idea of inclusive schools. If you can go to the next slide, please. So we've been talking about inclusive, inclusivity and making our schools more inclusive for a number of years now. You've been engaged in that along with us. So just take a moment, board members, members on the public, executive staff, think about what, what comes to mind for you when you think about inclusive schools? So just take a moment, what are some of the key words that come to your mind? Chris, if you can click ahead. So we've been talking, as I said, down at the teacher level, at the parent level, at the school level and across our district, words like equity, which we hear that used a lot. Um, words like ability, we want to make sure that we're thinking of all ability levels when we include our equity, uh, perspective. Enjoy, I love seeing joy up there. And, and you're going to see as we move forward here today and you see some of the pictures of these students in our program, that joy really comes out and it comes out in our adults in the program as well. So we have an inclusive vision here in Long Beach. And I'm actually going to ask if there's a board member willing to unmute and read this. I love putting people on the spot. So is there somebody who can give voice to our LBUSD inclusive vision? I see Megan's hand, I don't see the others, so I'll go with Megan.
LBUSD values all students and recognizes that student diversity and uniqueness add to the fabric of our district. We create schools, communities that promote appreciation and acceptance of student differences where all students feel a sense of belonging. We provide purposeful and meaningful access and participation in academic and social emotional growth opportunities. Our all means all belief system means that we're, we are better together.
So let's just leave that slide there, thank you, Ms. Kerr. Just leave that slide there for a quick moment and find some of those words that are important to you. And whether you're a high school student, thinking about where you fit in to your high school, school community. If you think about a teacher, um, student level to elementary, pre-K level and all across our district. I think we can all, um, kind of come around this common idea of we have differences, but we all need to have that sense of belonging and we all need to feel connected and we all need to feel included. So if you recall, and you can, next slide, please. A couple of years ago, as a board, um, not all of you were on the board at the time, but our board a couple of years ago passed a resolution that was about inclusive education practices. And before that time and since that time, we've really been working hard to try to bring that, um, that vision that came through that resolution into a reality for our students in the classroom. And so that takes us to where we are now. Um, we're going to highlight today this pre-K partnership. But I, I want to say, while Dr. Heenan and I are here, um, presenting tonight, there's a big team behind us. And so just a, a few of the leaders in this team. We have, of course, Dr. Aaron Simon, our Assistant Superintendent of School Sports Services. You can see across the, the three, uh, key partners in this specific pre-K CCT work. We have our Buffon Total Learning Center led by Marian Garcia. We have the Child Development Centers led by Cindy Young. And then we have our Head Start Program that is currently run by LaShel Diggs. But before her, a, as an advocate for the CCT program was Dr. Claudia Sosa Valderrama. And this partnership, um, again, this is not easy. It takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of coordination, it takes a lot of training and support with our teachers, communication with our parents, and we think we've gotten to a point where we really have created a model partnership. But I also want to highlight, if you can move forward, we're, this idea of collaborative co-teach and inclusive practices is not just in our pre-K program. So I want to remind us that this is something we've been looking and expanding across our elementary system. So currently, this is in the, we're in the second year of our collaborative co-teach classrooms at the elementary level. Um, we have a school in every board district. So District One, we have Adams Elementary. District Two, Bernie. District Three, Lincoln. District Four, Lowell. And District Five, Emerson. And if you remember, in these CCT classrooms at these five schools, we have a general education teacher and a teacher with a special, special education credential working together in a general education classroom with a class of students that is, that are both general education and students with IEPs. And previously, these students may have been in their own mild to moderate classroom. But what we've done is we've, uh, brought students and teachers together in a very collaborative way. There's a lot of co-planning, um, trying to figure out what's going to work best for the varied ability levels within the classroom. You can see things like flexible learning structures, high expectations for all students. Um, obviously, not all students are, are the same, but frankly, kindergarten students in a general education classroom are not the same. They have varied needs. Um, students in special education have varied needs. So we've seen this an awesome opportunity through these CCT programs to bring all ability leveled students together, and we've seen some great, um, results already. Obviously, this year, there was a, you know, a bit of a challenge as we're thinking about implementing this in a, in a virtual setting. But we've still seen growth and are excited to continue the upward trajectory next year. So I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Heenan and she'll give us a, even a more specific, uh, perspective of what's going on in our pre-K CCT, CCT classrooms.
Thanks, Brian. So good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Baker and those listening at home. As you can see from the information Mr. Moskowitz shared, um, even during a pandemic, we're continuing to do some groundbreaking work in our district related to equity and inclusion. And that's specifically for our early learners with all abilities. One thing I want to stress, um, like Brian said, is that anybody watching today, inclusion is not a program or a thing that we do. Um, inclusion is truly a belief or a philosophy on how we in Long Beach view and serve all our students. So for many of you watching today, um, you may ask, and I get a lot of questions, I hear about preschool CCT, but what exactly is it? So for those of you, um, who don't know and, um, need a little bit more information, we're going to, uh, show a video that provides a brief explanation of what collaborative co-teaching is, and that's CCT. And what the model looks like at the preschool level. So, um, as a reference, we started this preschool CCT program last year as a pilot with only two CDC classrooms, one at Hudson and one at Central CDC. And this was prior to COVID-19. Um, we saw great success with our students and the CCT option has now grown to eleven classrooms, five at our Head Start sites and six with our CDC partners. So this belief, um, in inclusive practices in CCT classrooms is blossoming in our district and so are our students. So without further ado, I'm going to let you, um, watch the video and have the video do the talking.
We have our, um, CDC collaborative co-teaching classrooms, um, at a few of our sites this year. One of the things that we have to think about with our collaborative co-teaching classrooms is that they are preschools. They are general education classes with all of our students. Um, but some of our students are receiving their special education services within that classroom. So in addition to the childcare workers that support CDC and the paraprofessionals that support the programs, we have these two expert teachers that together really bring their knowledge, their expertise and learn how to maximize, how do we, how do we maximize having two teachers in the classroom? So we have one who is a specialist on, um, uh, the CDC program. Then we have another teacher who is, um, credentialed with an ed specialist credential. The collaborative co-teaching program has really been an amazing addition to CDC. The CDC program focuses on developmentally appropriate practices. As a result, our students learn through intentional structured play. So that means that our teachers have to be really strategic about embedding learning into the center activities. Our children have the opportunity to investigate, ask questions, explore and learn at their own pace. I also believe that this program has helped our teachers grow professionally. They each bring a unique set of skills that through the collaborative teaching practices, they learn from each other. Ultimately, our goal is to ensure that all of our children are happy, healthy, safe and successful.
Preschool is play-based, so our structured learning is happening within the playtime. Um, where in a kindergarten classroom, it's going to be all more table-based. It's also been really cool for our students that don't have IEPs, that are typically developing, to learn, um, that accommodations are not, um, different. Um, like we have a lot of kids that have devices and we had a child that got one this year. And the kids are like, um, he has words now, he got words, he, he can talk, and they were very excited.
Uh, the general education, uh, setting, they, uh, uh, develop more awareness of, not all of the kids, regardless of the, the same age, they're not the same, they're different. And they learn how to interact with them and how to help them. And, uh, for little ones with the special needs, it benefits them in a great deal because they are, um, they tend to imitate, so they imitate their other kids', uh, skills and, and social skills and, um, not only the academic.
We have a really good results because in the beginning, the kids, they are like, uh, they have a lot of tensions. They have a lot of, uh, they didn't talk with all the kids. And by the time to now is they have a really good results. And then a lot of kids, they start talking more and more, talking more, uh, social, um, skills with all the kids.
It's been helping not only children with disabilities, that helps the genetic children too. Like I say, this is just one class. We treat like everybody equal. When people come, even the parents, some of the days, they, they tell us, wow, we, we don't even see a difference. They, they look like same.
It's good because, um, my daughter, um, she had fun with it, learning stuff, making new friends. She sees them and then she's being a helper to the other kids that has the special, um, uh, needs.
I like to, I like to share with toys from all of my classmates.
It's personally the way I think it's supposed to be because there aren't, there aren't post offices for children with special needs or adults with special needs, there's not grocery stores. We all live in the same community, so we should theoretically be taught in the same classrooms if possible. Um, I do realize that there are things that will make that difficult at times and that there is more services needed. But, um, it should start in the classroom because it's going to teach them to be adults that are inclusive. It's going to teach the communities to be inclusive because that's really how it should be.
You can be in the classrooms and you can see that these kids are flourishing. Um, their language skills, their social skills, their readiness skills, all of those things that we're building, um, and from such an early, early age. So what we've seen evidence in our CDC, um, CCT classrooms this year is, um, validating all the research that's out there around why inclusive practices and inclusion is good for all kids.
Thanks for that. So as a reminder, um, this video was created last year in our pilot year, and that was our Hudson program. Um, and, and it, it's just, it always makes me smile, it's a total feel-good. So hopefully that provided you with more information on what collaborative co-teaching classrooms look like at the pre-K level and the amazing work that our CDC Head Start, Special Ed Teachers, aides and students continue to do today. So again, um, if we could go to the next slide. I'm just going to share with you a few photos right now of that even during COVID. Um, the CDC students in the Head Start classrooms continue to thrive. And that our students do have an option to attend in person or in an online virtual session. So I just wanted to kind of share a few photos, um, of what, what in-classroom looks like. So if you go to the next slide, I'd also like to highlight some of the professional development that has been provided over the past two years and will continue to be provided to our staff in the CCT programs. What we've done is we've been able to differentiate training for our CCT teachers based on the needs of the teachers and their years of experience as a CCT teacher. Um, the professional development is led by Rochelle Martin, who is our collaborative co-teach coordinator and also a curriculum specialist in the Office of Special Education. And if you look at the slides, we have, um, basically a sample of our year one and year two training opportunities for staff. And what we've done is we've provided structures for them where we have release days. We have classroom visitation, um, and coaching days. We have site administration, participation, cross-site participation and visitations from different schools. Um, we've also had parent meetings, um, at different sites to talk about, um, what it's like to, um, be involved in a CCT classroom. Um, we did that at the elementary levels as well and got a lot of great feedback from the parents. Um, if you look at year two, we've also in the spring, we have a teacher kickoff. So some of our new teachers, um, we get to kind of pair them up and just basically start building relationships in the summer. And all through the summer, we provide professional development to our staff. And also, um, throughout the year, we provide ongoing, um, cross-site collaboration and and individual coaching based on the needs of each pair. So Rochelle may go in and work with one site on just basically the philosophies of co-teaching, on how to arrange your rooms and how do you set up your classrooms for optimal instruction. Or she might work with more veteran, comfortable teachers and really dig deeper into differentiation. So basically, the professional development that's been provided to staff has truly been unique to the individual teaching pair. So if we want to go to the next slide. So as we discussed in the past, we talk about data collection a lot, and we keep data on each and every child and their progress in the Gen Ed setting. And as Mr. Moskovitz stated, this year has been quite a bit unique. But we're still keeping, you know, data on every child so that we can inform our decisions for programs and also determine to what additional supports each child is going to need in that Gen Ed setting. We use also anecdotal data from our staff to see what's working and what's not, where we as a district need to come in and provide more support to teachers. So recently, we asked teachers in the C C T programs in an anonymous survey to provide us some insight on really the progress of students, how is the collaboration going, what's the team building look like? And just here's some of the written feedback that they've provided that we pulled out. And I'll go ahead and let you just take a look at that yourself. But it's pretty positive overall related to students and related to teachers. And yes, we definitely have issues that we're working out and we're supporting school sites. But overall, it's definitely been a positive experience for most teachers. Next slide, please. Okay. And so the last few slides I'd like to leave you with, they were taken immediately after our preschool students with disabilities joined our Head Start and CDC classes in late January. We thought you'd like to get a glimpse into these classrooms and really see the safety precautions that everyone is taking to ensure that the safety and well-being of students, staff, and everyone at the school. So I'll go ahead and let you just play a quick snippet of some pictures of our current C C T program. All right. So on my end, I didn't really get to see the expanded view, so I'd be happy to go ahead and send the clip to the board members, and we can even put it on our website, so if you weren't able to see the pictures in the classrooms. But it was amazing, the students coming in, they know their routines as far as taking temperatures, coming off the bus, you know, spraying their feet, coming in, sitting in their socially-distanced space, wearing masks all day. So it's just really impressive to see, and I just have to applaud the CDC and Head Start for their safety protocols. So again, I'll get that video out so that everybody can see the snippet of those pictures. So in closing, just the last slide, I want to, I think we can all say when we stay focused on our students, what's best for our students, we will always make the right decisions, no matter how hard it is. I have a quote on my wall that I look at all the time, right next to my computer, from Rosa Parks, and I refer to it a lot during difficult times, and it says, "You must never be fearful about what you're doing when it is right." And so inclusive schools and collaborative co-teaching is right. It's right for L B U S D, and it's right for our students. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time and open it up to any questions. Mr. Moskovitz and I can answer for you.
Do we have any questions? I can't see my fellow board members.
I have a question. It's Megan.
That's Ms. Currie.
Thank you for a really well-timed presentation. I think seeing those little ones, even though we know it was pre-COVID, was a good reminder that, for me, that's what I want to get back to, that kind of joy and freedom and whatever that will look like as we come back together. So thank you for that. So we have, just a quick question. It's just, I think in the nature that it has been a hard year, and we know transitions can be difficult for any kid, but can be amplified for students with disabilities. So we have a kinder and a first grade at those sites, or some of those sites, correct? And I know that you're really intentional about who teams up to teach in those classrooms. Has there been any conversation around teachers looping with students as a way to lessen transitions or a desire to work, especially potentially after this year, when they may not have seen them in person, to kind of ease that transition? Is that part of the conversation moving forward as a possibility?
Dr. Heenan, do you know if that, I don't know, I've not seen that as a model yet. Of course, this is the second year. I know that our principals are hard at work with Office of School Support Services, Office of Special Education, to make sure we have to get the right pairings. Do you know, Rachel, of any looping that may happen?
Yeah, no, we haven't talked about that, Ms. Currie, yet, but I mean, it's definitely something to consider. I think, like you said, is we're really selective on this pairing. Of course, there's always kinks to work out. But I think that the critical thing that we focus on is making sure that our students are receiving content at the appropriate grade level. And so, you know, sometimes it's a little more challenging for teachers to move, you know, back and forth, up and down levels. So we want to make sure that they have the mastery of content with, in addition to the being able to differentiate for those students. But it's definitely something to consider.
I appreciate it.
Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Dr. Heenan. So my question is sort of broader in terms of moving forward. Can you talk a little bit about what's been the most challenging aspect? You know, having these C C T models right now, operationalizing them, and then talk sort of a little bit about moving forward, you know, beyond the the health measures that we're taking and the protocols, right? Love to hear from either of you on that.
I mean, I can jump in, and then Dr. Heenan, obviously, feel free to join in. And I would say, there's a lot of people on this call who've been a part of this, whether it's Dr. Simon or Dr. Round the Four, so anyone can feel free to jump in. I think anytime you bring two adults together into one room and have them working collaboratively, that's always going to be a challenge. Because as teachers, we're kind of trained and we kind of, we develop our skills to basically be in our four walls with our students and be in charge of our classroom. And so we haven't had any problems with it, but that's always something that we have to, when you bring two teachers into the same space for the entire day, you know, you have to build those collaborative opportunities for them. You have to build those, they have to build the relationships with one another. We want to make sure it's a right fit to begin with. So I think that's always going to be, going forward, that's always going to be a challenge to make sure that you get a good fit and that you put the steps in place and the processes in place for the two to connect and be able to plan well together.
No, I definitely agree. But what we've seen actually is some, a lot of positive feedback, even though we are in COVID and the challenges that are happening right now. A lot of the teachers are saying they really enjoy the opportunity to have the breakout rooms. So even to take students who do or do not have an I E P and work with them together to pull them out separately in a smaller group has definitely been an advantage during this time of a pandemic. But yeah, I think as Brian said, it's, you know, someone who might have been teaching for 20 years has their own style of when they come in, where they put their purse, where the kids sit down. And, you know, working through that logistics of having a new teacher, a teacher come in and join your space, I think was a little bit more of the challenge that those teachers experienced. But they always, the feedback is so much more positive on being able to have a thought partner when they're doing lessons or after a lesson, to be able to say, "Well, that didn't work for me. Oh, that worked for me. What could we do better?" So it's more, a lot more positive feedback in having those two experts in the room together.
Now I'll just add, just the professional development that has been provided to teachers just to learn how to co-teach together has been instrumental. And I think especially this year, that has been great and worked out well. So, you know, thank you again to Rochelle Martin, who you saw in the video, for really working out and providing professional development for our general ed teachers and also our special education teachers as well to work together.
Mr. Miller, did you have a question?
No, just more of a comment. I can imagine the difficulty of, one, putting together such a robust program, but then also fantastic video, as I watched it, made me a little jealous because I know my little one's anxious to have some friends as well. And so it was really cool, like Megan said, to be reminded of why we're here. So thank you for putting that together for us.
I'm going to share this with you, but I'll hush. When C C T program for preschool opened on the 19th of January, I can tell you, being at two school sites that morning to see the joy on those students' faces, although they were nervous, they had their mask, they were excited, but actually going into the classroom, just seeing them work together with their peers and just state how excited they were to be back in school just made my week, and also the week of others. I know Dr. Heenan can express that as well, and also Mr. Moskovitz, but it was just amazing to see students so excited to be back in their spaces with their peers.
I can only imagine, because my little one has two peers, and they're both over the age of 30. I'm sure that that's not a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Heenan and Mr. Moskovitz. That was just amazing. And thank you for the teams that you represented in your presentation as well. So next, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Brown, who's going to provide some additional information about the criteria for reopening schools and some other clarification on questions that are being asked about our efforts to reopen schools.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. So I want to take us back to December 30th, when Governor Newsom made a strong statement about the expectation for rather immediate reopening of schools and the planning therein. Next came January 14th, where there were new guidelines issued by the California Department of Public Health. A couple of important documents, a checklist and a companion document that describe the expectations around the safety planning that should occur around school reopening. And I think it's important to highlight that the California Department of Public Health is the author and administrator of the blueprint for a safer economy that created the colored tiers that we have referenced so much in the last month. So with that as the context, I wanted to share a slide with you that captures really the experience that we've had since August and the expectations of our reopening going forward. Because there's been, like, has been a part of so much of this experience, there's been some notable changes in the criteria that allows for our reopening. So if you look to this chart, you'll see at the top the reference to high-needs students and small cohorts. That could be a group of students that need a specific type of intervention. It could be a student who has special needs. It could be a student who's an English language learner. And going back to August, regardless of the tier that our county is in, our county has only ever been in the purple tier. It has been permitted to provide support to students in high-needs groups. That continues to be true to date. Much of our planning around the efforts to support small groups of high-needs students was thwarted prior to Thanksgiving as the COVID surge really took off and we made the decision to hold on our pursuit of providing in-person support for students at that time. If you look to the TK through six column, going back to August of 2020, the expectation for reopening required us to be in the red tier for 14 days. And there was also the allowance for school waivers for TK two at that time. So what shifted since that time is that there's no longer the specific reference to the tiers, but rather the expectation that in order to be, for school opening to be allowable, there needs to be a five-day average. If you could just go back to the slide, Chris. Thank you. There needs to be five consecutive days of meeting an adjusted case rate of 25 per 100,000 people. And you've likely heard reference to the adjusted case rate in the media and in other places. What that means is that per 100,000 people, there is an adjustment of the case rate that equates to the amount of testing that's occurring and the positivity rate. And so the expectation for our potential reopening hinges upon reaching, in LA County, not in the city of Long Beach, but in LA County, a case rate, an adjusted case rate of 25 per 100,000 people. What's important to note is that our adjusted case rate has been declining rapidly. At our last board meeting on January 13th, Dr. Baker referenced our adjusted case rate at that time. It was just under 100. It was 98.5. To date, our adjusted case rate in Los Angeles County is 38.2. So in a space of just a few weeks, we've seen a significant decline in the case rate, and that is predicted by our local health officials to be declining still. So the target that we would need to reach to make a reopening of school allowable is 25 per 100,000 people, or an adjusted case rate of 25 over five consecutive days. I think it's important to note that never since schools closed in March of 2020 has it been allowable for a school reopening in Los Angeles County, given these parameters. But we are approaching a point where that will be a possibility. The question remains, when will we reach that point? But we wanted to share this information with you so that you have and are working from the information that we have and that we are working with in tandem with local, county, and state health officials. Another thing that I think is important to clarify is that one of the changes in the recent January 2021 guidelines from California Department of Public Health, they stopped the waiver process. So there's been a lot of reference prior to schools' ability to apply for waivers. And they're no longer allowing that process. It was closed or halted prior to Thanksgiving, and that has continued to be the case as this new criteria has been rolled out. I want to specifically mention grades seven through 12 because we're very aware and very proud of the fact that we're a unified school district. And oftentimes, the conversation around reopening has focused around elementary or even preschool. But specific to grades seven through 12, or our secondary group of students, going back to August, the requirement was that we reach the red tier for 14 days. The requirement going forward for the possibility of a reopening at grades seven through 12 is that we reach that red tier. And again, reaching the red tier requires that we meet that data criteria for 14 days. And then this new plan requires that we would be five days beyond that 14 days. As if things aren't confusing enough, one of the things that's important to note with the use of the tiered system and the movement between tiers for counties is that those changes go into effect on Tuesdays. So Tuesdays is an important day for looking at local health data or county health data because changes within the tiers or within the adjusted case rate really go into effect Tuesday for the week that proceeds. You can advance to the next slide, Chris. So I wanted to highlight some of the things that we are working towards and talk about some of the statements that were even made in public comment tonight because we recognize that with the changing amount of information, the volume of information that people are getting, and the multitude of sources that that information is coming from, there have been some notable changes, and it's hard to follow the changes. So the first thing that feels very important to say is that we've been on a process for surveying our elementary parents and families about their interest in returning to in-person or their interest to remain virtual. And we heard a number of parents expressing concerns tonight about a return to school. I just want to reiterate for the community that the return, the potential return to in-person instruction is a family choice. It's a choice that could be made. We will maintain a virtual option. It's not a choice that would be forced upon families. So for those who have concerns, I just want to re-highlight that you have a choice in the matter, and we recognize the sensitivity surrounding all of the things that families are planning for right now. Some of the things that feel important to mention, there's been conversation around... Some of the things that feel important to mention, um there's been conversation around the March first date that we had previously proposed as a as a possible reopening. And we have messaged that we are actively working towards that date as a possible in-person opening date. But that hinges upon meeting the criteria that I've described and it hinges upon expectations and preparations that are being made right now. I want to touch upon some of the questions that were frequently asked. And then also message that going forward in the month of February, Dr. Baker will be making a community message every week and we will be messaging messaging directly to our school staffs around some of the things that are very important for them to know right now. So that one question that comes up up often is that, and it's important to highlight, students and staff will be health screened daily. That's a question that's been asked. Would that, is that something that would continue? The next thing is that students and staff will be tested for COVID weekly. One of the requirements upon a reopening for a county that is in the purple tier and has met the adjusted case rate of twenty-five for five consecutive days is that if there's, if you're within a range, that adjusted case rate being between fourteen and twenty-five, there is a requirement for weekly asymptomatic testing for students and for staff. And we are, as a part of our preparation and working towards our in-person opening, we are planning to meet that testing requirement. Everyone on campus will be required to wear face coverings. That's something that's come up. There's a a very, very small group that might have a medical exemption for the use of a face covering. But that's something that we are planning towards for that very, very small population of people. And that we would be planning to help keep safety for all in those few instances where a person would be medically exempt from the use of a face mask. Students' desks will be continue to be distanced six feet apart. Students will remain in stable groups throughout their time on campus. And that means that students will be in in pods or groups that move together throughout the space of the day. One of the challenges related to secondary reopening is that being able to keep students in stable groupings is much harder to navigate when students go to uh and need to have access to a full complement of classes that require intermingling. Sites will have very specific entrance and exit expectations that have been clearly laid out. And we are in conversation with our site administrators about those expectations now. And then all staff will have training related to COVID nineteen prevention practices, and that's something that's actually been deployed going back a couple of weeks. And then our site administrators and all of our department leads are in process of training on right now. If you can stop screen sharing, Chris, this is not the entirety. The the bullets that I've just highlighted are not the entirety by any means of our preparations. But I wanted to bring forward some of the things that have been routinely asked in parental or community outreach or staff questions, even some of the things that you've heard addressed this evening in um public comment, deal with some of these things. So I wanted to highlight that those are all a part of our preparations and our planning for the hope and the possibility that a reopening of in-person instruction is upon us. I welcome any questions that you have or any additional information that someone else on the team would like to contribute to the conversation.
I have a quick question about the availability of this information. Is this online for our parents to access?
Um, we are doing a couple of things. We have just recently uh edited and updated our reopening and safety protocols. And that is accessible online. It has been um since the early parts of summer. We are updating it specifically to add in some of these new requirements because some of what I've just spoken about specific to testing uh as being the main uh big change, it was required based on the changes in the middle part of January. So we're updating those things now, so they'll be available.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Otto, did you have a question?
You're on mute, Mr. Otto. I'm I'm just, it's usually me that's on mute, but we're partners in that.
In in some ways, the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room room is the availability of vaccinations. And I presume we have no control over that. Uh, what's our best information and how are we pursuing that so that we can get information about that out to uh our uh teachers and our parents?
Thank you for asking. And I know everyone is tuning into a national and a statewide and local conversation about vaccinations. Um, we've continued to appreciate our partners at the city. Um, we did not receive the number of vaccinations in the city or specifically for our employees that we hoped we we would receive. We received about ten percent as much as we had hoped for. Uh, the city has really partnered with us. We're in regular communication with them to make more uh vaccines available to our staff as they are available. And we continue to actively engage with the city as well as the county and other sources for trying to make vaccines available um as much as could be possible.
Is what's the intersection of the rules for that we have to adhere to with regard to bringing people back in the uh in the K through eight, K through eight level. Uh, it sounds to me like there's very little likelihood that we that our uh high school students, upper students would will have much opportunity to to go back in the in the near future. I mean, we're cautiously optimistic that things will get better, but uh you know, we'll know in a in a week or so after this Super Bowl weekend, I guess, uh what direction we're going in. But um the is what's the relationship between vaccination or the availability of vaccination and our reopening? Are we required to reopen? Or we uh uh I I'm I I heard a lot of comments and and I understand those comments. Uh, because people are not only worried about being on campus uh and uh possibly infecting somebody, but taking infection home to their parents or extended family, grandparents are uh um and are there, are we pursuing any policies with regard to that?
I think what you're asking is about the relationship between vaccines and reopening. And if that's a requirement, is that is that what you're asking, sir?
Yeah, or if not a requirement, what what's our thinking about that? I mean, do we have the option of uh I'm not saying make it into a requirement, but what's our discretion with regard to that?
Well, our first thought is that we want to continue to work with the city to make as many vaccines available to educators as possible. With that, educators and people choose if they become vaccinated or not. And so we've surveyed staff. We have a group of staff that would choose to not be vaccinated and that's their decision to make, but we will continue to work to make vaccinations available. We encourage our employees to pursue vaccination if they so choose through any means that they have available, not just the means that are available in Long Beach. Um, but they the there is no requirement that vaccines be in place for our reopening. The requirement for our reopening is that we meet the data that the health department has laid out and that we document that we have taken the safety precautions um to include testing to safely reopen schools.
And I presume that we're doing surveys or trying to get information about how many students are likely to return and how many teachers there will be and whether there are enough teachers to teach those students or to be with those students. How are we doing that?
We're actively engaging our community and specifically elementary families around their desire to return for in-person instruction because so much of our planning around what happens next would be based on who chooses to physically come to school versus who chooses to remain virtual.
I'm sorry, Mr. Otto. Just on on the issue of the survey, I think it's important. You heard a couple of parents talk about some challenges with the survey tonight. The survey, we are asking parents to complete that survey by this Friday the fifth because we want the information, we want the most accurate information to be able to make decisions about how many students will be returning. If you need to extend that into early next week, of course, you can do so. What I would encourage you to do, if you're having any challenges with the survey, please contact your child's uh school office. And they'll be happy to either take your information over the phone if you can't make it work through the survey or they can help you to complete the survey. But if 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 your challenge is not understanding what the survey is asking or how to complete it, please reach out to your child's school and they will be able to help you with that.
Okay, I think Ms. Kerr was next with a question and then Dr. Ben, Dr. Benitez. Um, Ms. Kerr?
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Brown, for that information. I just wanted to go back to the requirements piece. I think it's really critical. Um, we published and put out what our guidelines were. Sorry, I'm looking off to the side because I have it posted up here as well. A while ago. And as you stated, the Department of Public Health from the state is the one who's making the call on so many of those requirements. And I just wanted to um go back to that idea that those, if we're gonna use a sports metaphor um since it's Super Bowl week, uh the goalposts have moved often since this started. So we know that that information fast and furious in the spring and in the summer. And then we thought we got to oh, what I heard you say is that we had things in our head until December thirtieth. And at the beginning of January, the goalposts moved again. Specifically mid-January to give us some new requirements that we hadn't incorporated into our reopening plan because at the time it was created, it wasn't a requirement. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. And I'll I'll just draw attention to this document that came out on January fourteenth. And this is the checklist that we will be working from per the California Department of Public Health that requires us to do a number of things. The majority of the things that it requires are not new to us and they're things that we have been prepared for and that we continue to be prepared for. But a couple of the changes, most notably the requirements for reopening and the requirement for asymptomatic testing um are things that are new to us and that we are continuing to actively work with and plan for.
And if you could just speak to that testing uh piece again, I know uh this is where the the city and the county are different. The city of Long Beach has had a robust testing program for folks who are symptomatic, but also for folks who are asymptomatic who want to get a test, can make an appointment and drive through. Um, that's been something that is in a lot of our psyches as an availability. But the test requirement is new, but it isn't the system that we're familiar with at the moment. Is that correct?
That's correct. And all of the avenues that have been available through the city and the county continue to be available. We appreciate them. Um, but the public health guidelines require us and us being Long Beach unified as a city, as a school district in Los Angeles County that should we meet the requirement of twenty-five for five consecutive days, we will still be in the purple tier and we will still be in a range that requires us to do weekly asymptomatic testing for all of the students and staff that come onto our campus. And so we are in the process of planning, we've been planning for the test, a testing requirement of some type, not knowing exactly what the requirement would be. And we are actively engaging in a conversation about contracting with agencies that will support our receipt of the test and our process around testing. But the requirement for reopening is that students and staff coming onto campus are tested weekly. And that's for asymptomatic purposes. The other component that you referenced continues to be a person who's ill or a person who seeks testing on their own because of something that they're concerned about. And those avenues will continue to be available through the city and county sites.
So we'll have to essentially contract with a company to do that testing, which means we have to vet put together a contract, approve a contract and use hopefully more money that's coming from different relief packages to pay for that. So that that's something that is being researched right now behind this scene. But you haven't brought anything to us in regard to that, correct?
That's correct. We've been actively engaging
In terms of a contract or
Right. We've been actively engaging in that process um going back a number of weeks. Um, the State Department of Public Health in tandem with the California Department of Education have recommended a couple of vendors and we've been in conversation with them um as recently as today. So we're continuing to work towards that and will be prepared um for the time when we are moving towards in-person instruction.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Dr. Benitez, did you have a question?
Yes, I I I wanted to highlight the the nuance of of what's allowable, that that something is allowable now. Um, and the what it takes to operationalize a safe reopening of schools a plan as as Board Member Kerr uh alluded to, not just with regards to testing, but what we need to have in place at the school sites. And ultimately, um, the parent's choice uh right to to select the in-person uh option. And I and I and I think there's five areas for me that would be important to have information um as much, I mean, I think this is the time to overload our communities and and us uh with information. One of them, um Mr. Moskovitz alluded to, I think it would be really, really important uh once we get the the results back from the survey uh to to really disaggregate those. And we talked about it, uh right, that the difference, not just in response rate across our district, uh but then within our respective areas, um who's choosing what option, whether that's in-person or staying virtual, particularly being mindful of the equity uh piece and the equity conversations that we're having. Uh, right, that that if we have a disparity across our district and or across our student population subgroups, that that's something we need to be mindful of, particularly if um members of our community are are still having accessibility issues, uh connectivity issues and digital literacy uh as a part of that and and what they know or or may not know of what in-person will look like, all right? The parents, the community members that I'm speaking with are still very confused. They know they have two options. Um, I've I've been sharing with them, you know, you know, complete the survey, complete the survey. But I think we need to provide a lot more information. Um, and you have the the bullet points there, Dr. Brown. Uh, what what that will look like, all right, whether it's visuals or just, you know, a bombardment of information of this is uh what that looks like. I think second uh for me is um the budget piece. And again, Board Member Kerr highlighted some of the implications. So I think it would be important to have as much information of the resources uh that it that we need, uh given the breakdown of how many students are gonna still be virtual, how many students are gonna be in-person and what it's gonna take to pay for those tests, right, on a weekly basis. And not that that's the ultimate consideration, but that's important, uh I think, uh to know and to consider. Third, um, uh, we really do need a comprehensive snapshot. Um, and and we've had snippets of that in the last few months as to how our students are doing right now. Uh, right, not just in terms of their academic uh performance, but how are they doing socially and emotionally uh right now? We've heard, again, in public comment of some of the supports that are needed, some of the supports that are wanted. And I think that will play into parents, again, being able to make a more informed decision on what's best for their particular student, knowing uh sort of what we're doing. One, to support students that are gonna continue uh online virtually, but also additionally um how we're going to support students in their transition back, right? Because many of them are coming back with with trauma. Many of them are coming back with social isolation, uh right? And and other things that I think would be important for us to highlight uh what we're gonna do. Um, fourth, um, and again, uh it it it's connected uh together is um and I'll I'll use myself, right? I have a third grader uh in the district. Um, it may look different for a third grader than for, we just saw some of the wonderful CCT uh options that we have available for a third grader in Jan Ed uh versus a family that has two students uh with disabilities. Uh, right? So again, what what are those options and things that we will continue to provide uh virtually versus uh what other things can be done in person for families to sort of weigh uh those options, I think are are super important. Um, I think the last, the last area, I think that was four, I'm not sure if that was three or four. But my last area, I think it would be also important to um get as much information about the conversations that we're having with our labor partners, given that we're employer employing ten thousand plus. given that we're employing 10,000 plus employees in the city and that, you know, we, as Mr. Otto alluded to, you know, where does vaccination play into that? You know, so, you know, I think as much information as we have about how those conversations with labor partners are going, I think would also be helpful. So that's a lot, but I think February is important for us, considering that we're moving toward the 25 adjusted case rate out of 100,000. And I think as we venture into March, that I sense an increased anxiety from community members and from parents, just, you know, having the information that they need to make the best informed choice about their students. And I think that also sets a precedent for what we take into consideration for the next academic year, right, which is literally right around the corner as well. So as much information, I know that executive staff is working hard, Dr. Baker, Dr. Brown, but I think right now is the time that we just need to flood, open up the floodgates with information so that at the very least, we can start supporting the parents that are ultimately making decisions for children and students as to what will be the best option for them, given that I think there's a lot of confusion still, not just with the adjusted case rates, that we have a different adjusted case rate in Long Beach than we do with the county, but that there's a lot left to the imagination as to what in-person instruction will actually look like. So I wanted to just nuance everything that's been said, but I think those are five key areas for me where we need information. And being creative, Brian, I love the idea of, hey, if a parent can't go online to fill out the the survey, a call right to the school saying, hey, I don't know how to navigate Parent View, and maybe it's in Spanish, maybe it's in Kamai, but, you know, I want to make sure that I, we make a decision that's best for the students in that household.
Okay, do we have any further questions? I don't see any further questions, so, well, thank you very much. Thank you for those presentations. I think we'll move on then to business items. Personnel, Mr. Miller?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'll be reading the personnel report. So I'm here to present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. First, I'll start with the classified and exempt personnel. Appointments for leaves of absence 22. Abandishments of positions to resignations six, retirements to amendments four. In regards to certificated personnel, appointments nine. In-service changes 16, leaves of absence nine, resignations three, retirement seven, and amendments nine. That is the Human Resources Committee's report.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor by roll call vote. Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Instruction, instruction report.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Finance, finance report A.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Finance report B.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband AEs.
Okay, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed one abstention, so that passes 4-0 with one abstention. Business Department report.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Purchasing and contracts report.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, actually, I was wondering if Dr. Kale could talk briefly about item five, Hill Pedagogy Services. I'm hoping that we can possibly talk about this at the upcoming workshop, but I wanted to just give a preview because it's really exciting and important work.
Certainly. Hill Pedagogies is led by Dr. Goldie Mohammed, and she's the author of Cultivating Genius and also a, oh, thank you for holding up the book, and also a researcher at Georgia State University. She happens to be one of the leading experts in conducting curriculum reviews around cultural responsiveness and equity. So for us, we plan to start in the areas of English Language Arts and in history. And so Dr. Mohammed and her colleagues are going to go through our, some of our curriculum units, course outlines, and provide a report on what they find. But more importantly, she's going to be building the capacity of our OCIPD staff so that we can continue this work off into the future.
Great. Dr. Baker, I hope we can, if we have a workshop day coming up at some point, I would love to get a little more detailed report about some of that equity work specifically, if that would, if you could pencil that in somewhere.
Thank you. I've made a note of it. Appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone. Any further discussion? All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Superintendent items, we have none, okay? Unfinished business, we have none. New business. And I'm going to ask Mr. Otto to read this after I, well, I'll have Mr. Otto read the resolution after I read this article. So Resolution 020321-B, National Counseling Week. So, Mr. Otto, would you read that resolution for us?
If I can find it.
Oh, do you, oh, do you have the paperwork handy?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't prepare you in advance. Our closed session ran kind of late and I was having technical issues, so I apologize. But I thank you for your willingness to help out.
I, is it? I can see it in my packet after, well, it should maybe it's further along.
Towards the back, it's probably like the fifth page to the last or one.
And this is a resolution for declaring support for National School Counseling Week? That's the one I found. This is a resolution of the Governing Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District, declaring support for National School Counseling Week. And here's the resolution. Whereas school counselors are employed in public schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and use community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And the last whereas is, whereas comprehensive development of school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and the Long Beach Unified School District hereby proclaims February 1 to 5, 2021, as National School Counseling Week. In witness thereof, we have heretofore set our hands on this third day of February 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Otto, and thank you to all of our wonderful counselors. That's an action item, so I'm going to need a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, as long as I had or got to read it, and I'm not sure what, which one it was, I just want to say that I agree that the importance of counselors for what we do at our institutions, and I don't mean just talking to students, but the whole panoply of things that they do is oftentimes underestimated and and underappreciated, and it should be appreciated because they do an enormous benefit in kind of linking, linking up what students want and what our resources are, and therefore I'm happy to support this.
Yeah, I'll just add to what Mr. Otto said. We know that everybody's roles have turned a little bit upside down over the last 11 months, and I've seen counselors distributing food at community food drives. I have seen them distributing books and doing porch visits and dawning mascot costumes and dancing on TikTok and posting on Instagram as a way to engage students and families in new and creative ways. So to the counselors who are using every bit of their creativity and welcoming spirit, thank you for all that you are doing to make our kids feel like they belong at a time when that's really difficult.
Well said.
Yes, thank you for, thank you for including that. Okay, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
An emphatic aye for me. Thank you, counselor.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I join in with an I. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Resolution 020321-A, non-relection of temporary certificated employees.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Dr. Baker, if you could just give some background on this, I know this is something that happens every year with folks on special contracts, but if you could just give some background would be helpful.
Great. I think Mr. Zaid's prepared to do so.
Absolutely. Good evening, President Craighead, members of the board, Dr. Baker and executive staff, and our engaged community that is tuning in. This resolution is something that we regularly bring each year. The first part of this resolution just simply states, according to Education Code, when we hire temporary or special contractor, one-year temporary teachers, that we have to notify them of that at the beginning of the year, which we do. The second portion of this just simply states that we are required to let them know that their contract is going to be ending before the beginning of the next year. And we do this typically in February. The first portion of this resolution includes all of our leave replacements. This also includes all of our Head Start teachers who, because that program is funded categorically, we release them each year and then we rehire them. And so what this resolution allows for is it allows for the notification process to begin. So after this is voted, we will begin with ensuring that we proceed with the notifications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Now we have two separate memorandums of understanding with Teachers Association of Long Beach.
Mrs. Craighead, Mr. Rockenbach?
Yes.
Employee Relations is here to provide a little bit of input before you take action on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker and Board of Education, executive staff. So before you, the two MOUs were asking for your consideration for approval. Have to do with extending benefits for our opposite-sex domestic partners to have eligibility for all three of our health benefit plans that are offered by the district. This is something that's currently available only to our same-sex domestic partners. So we wanted to make sure we extend that. And it helps align our language to what current law allows. And it also is a measure in which we will, wanted to make sure this was on the books early, and we will be adjusting the regular contract language moving forward, but we felt that it was important to have this approved ahead of time. And the second MOU that you have before you is referring to leave language adjustments. The state of California recently changed its eligibility for certain cases for family, for employees to access family leave. And this did not change in the federal statute, so we had to create an MOU that addressed this to ensure that we were providing our employees all of the options that were available by law. And as mentioned with the previous MOU, we will be working to change the language completely in the next contract that we agree upon with our labor partners, but we wanted to make sure that this went forward since the state law went into effect January 1st.
Okay, do we have any, oh, we don't have a motion yet.
So moved.
So we need a?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
And these are both, both recommendations, both MOUs?
Yes, these are MOUs that were approved by our Teachers Union, the Teachers Association of Long Beach, and that's what we're asking for you to approve. These have been voted on and approved by the labor partner, and it's been, we've agreed upon by the district, but we need board approval for these MOUs to go into play.
I just wanted to be sure we could do that in one motion.
Great, okay. All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye for both.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Beach High School closure.
Move approval?
Second.
Could, could we get a little report?
Discussion?
Yeah, Dr. Camerino, could you give us some background? I know there's some concern, and we received some public comment tonight as well as some letters around Beach High School really being a place for students who are doing credit recovery, credit deficient. I know when the history, when the program came into effect, it was really to catch some of those students that were harder to catch in other systems. Can you talk about what support systems will be in place for the students who would be eligible to go to Beach? And how they'll be supported in either different places or their current campuses?
Sure, Madam Kerr. One of the things that we mentioned on January 14th, when we went out to meet with the Beach staff, is first and foremost to thank them for their service and understand that they've worked with some of our most at-promised students and doing great work with meeting the needs of our students. So we went out there to let them know that this was something that was going to be on, on the board agenda today. They opened in 2011 as a way to find a way to, to really support our sophomores after one year in high school, when they follow credit, they become credit deficient or have attendance issues or have sometimes even behavioral issues, the students would be sent to Beach. When they opened in 2011, they had 26 sophomores come onto the campus their first year. That was about the same time that we started link learning across all of our high schools. So the timing is about, right about the same time. In the second year, they had, they, they reached their maximum number of sophomores of 224 students. Since then, the numbers have declined from 183, 119, 99, 76, 76 again, and then 55 students from 2017, 2018. I think in the beginning of finding how do we can really address the needs of our freshman students that fall behind in school, that with link learning happening at the same time, those things and opening our thematic high schools of McBride and Browning and Sato, you know, we have found that, that whole notion of a school within a school of our link learning pathways, really meeting the needs of our students in a sometimes larger feeling campus that really is a school within a school and using what we've called our triads, our administrators that are over the pathway, our counselors over the pathway, and our lead teachers over that pathway, have really found a lot of ways to really move toward meeting the needs of our students. And the other piece too is phenomenal is the work that they're doing at Beach High School. We know that after one year in high school, as a former high school principal, that if we can get those freshman students to stay on track, it really is key to get them to graduate from high school and move to college and career. So we feel like after one year in school, their freshman year, to send them off to an alternative ed high school, as good as it is, most of our students don't return to main campus. So what we wanted to do was give, give our students the opportunities with so many more options that the students have had. The advent of Apex is one, one program that we've had that students can start, once they become credit deficient, their very first semester can start taking Apex classes their second semester, their freshman year to, to catch up in school. So the need for, again, looking at how we're looking at programs in our system, our, our programs in our system really cost-effective to meet the needs of our students. So with that has come a lot of work with now, currently, we have 37 students at, in that, in that program at Beach High School with 37 sophomores. We are seeing that even before the pandemic, we had less and less students attending, sophomore students attending Beach High School throughout the years with the advent of the progression of, of link learning and our pathways that are now getting silver certification. We just got notification that one of our pathways at Sato has now been silver certified also. So the work that we're doing with that school within a school notion and support that we have at our high schools through their pathways is really meeting the needs of our students, and we really want to hold on to our students as much as possible, provide the supports obviously too, and doing the interventions on campus to keep our students in our traditional high schools as much as possible. One year is just really fast to really consider in what they were trying to do back in 2010, 11, of really meeting the needs of our students. To now, we know that the small school feel of link learning and the pathways have really helped decrease the numbers prior to the pandemic, and the numbers continue to decrease as we start to meet the needs of our students on campus.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Camerino. Uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, oh, Dr. Benitez?
So, Dr. Camerino, um, if I'm understanding correctly, and let's use the example of the 37 students right now. Um, so they will be placed in one of the other campuses. Uh, in the past, students that may have been identified for Beach, we will have a targeted strategy in place to support those students who may have historically been identified to attend Beach. Is, is that how I'm understanding it?
Yes, correct. We're repurposing what we used to call our deans of discipline, for example. That's one, one of the programs we're starting now and making them more of intervention specialists to work with our students prior to, during their periods that are unscheduled. So we're gonna have their unscheduled classes to have to meet with these group, we meet with their quote-unquote deans and counselors to get that, you know, as you know, it's not just sometimes, obviously not just academic, but what is it that about the student that we need to support you with? Whether it's at home, whether it's resources, whether it's counseling, whether the SEL component of our students, and really helping with their mindset of meeting with them strategically during their unscheduled periods. Uh, and before, that means before and after school and at lunchtime also, giving them resources, field trips, connections, mentors, all those pieces that are really gonna help our students move along that now that our link learning pathways are more developed and we're using other techniques with our, the use of our, our intervention toses is really gonna support those students prior to them getting there. Mr. Miller?
From an anecdotal standpoint, if I'm a 10th grader who is 30 credits deficient from graduating, what is the movement, move going forward?
So as a sophomore, you would already be in Apex courses. You also have in our eighth period day, most of our students have six classes. You would, you potentially could have a seventh period class. Also, we, you know, again, another safety net is summer school, but by the sophomore year going into your junior year, then we still have EPHS, we have Reed, we have other safety nets for our students to catch up if the traditional environment of a high school does not pan out for that student.
So to be clear, there are other credit recovery programs that we can place the student in outside of the Beach High School.
Yes, we have, we have Reed that has services 11th and 12th graders as well as EPHS that can also serve 10th through 12th graders also.
Okay, uh, further discussion? All right, uh, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opposed abstentions passes 5-0. Uh, equity policy development. Um, Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Craighead. Um, I'm here with a brief report. This next week on Wednesday, February 10th, Dr. Camerino and I will be convening our student equity leadership team for the second time. We're really looking forward to being back with this amazing, smart group of students to hear their voice around the equity work that we're doing and the equity work that they would like for us to do. So we'll be focusing to our definition of equity and gathering some thoughts from them about what language needs to be included in that definition. I also want to highlight that the student equity leadership team is a group that is a natural convening place for other district groups that want feedback directly from students on our work around equity. So in March, Dr. Kell will be bringing to our group members of her curriculum advisory committee around equity and seeking student input on the work that we're doing around curriculum. So that's just an example of how this group is not just gathered to be with one another, which would be good in and of itself, but really that we have their voice captured and that we're actively seeking their voice around other work that we're doing in the district. So they are our advisors, if you will. Um, I also want to highlight that on January 21st, we had our first community equity leadership team convening. We had 27 of 30 participants in attendance that are a compilation of staff, community members, and parents. And we had a really positive meeting that laid a great foundation for our work going forward. We're working already to incorporate some of the feedback that we got at that group and really seeking the balance with our partners on the equity leadership team around how we build relationship, connect with one another, and listen to one another's lived experiences while we're working hard together to create an equity policy that we've stated the goal of bringing to you for consideration by June. So we're a group that wants to get to know one another and wants to learn from the experiences that we're collectively having and have had. But we're also a group that's committed to doing a lot of work in a rather quick turnaround going forward. I think it's also important to, to share that our equity work groups, which are a part of each board district area, each have between 10 to as many as 40 people in them. We have staff that will be supporting a convening of those groups by the middle part of February, so in just the next couple of weeks. And going forward, those work groups will serve in a couple capacities. One, to be a larger community voice where we will vet some of the ideas that come through the equity leadership team. But two, to be another group of people, as I referenced, the student equity leadership team, where other parts of our district, to include yourselves as board members, can seek conversation with a group that is committed to and interested in the work that we're doing around equity. So a lot to share. Um, we're looking forward to our second meeting with the equity leadership team on February 24th.
Thank you for that report. Uh, do we have any questions or comments for Dr. Brown? Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, I know that we are all, oh, Mr. Otto?
Yeah, these are in every district, each of the five districts?
Yes, so what we did, um, we went back, going back into November, we sought applications for an equity leadership team. I'll just do a quick bit of context. I'm sorry, Mr. Otto, Mr. Miller, I should have done this in the beginning. Um, we sought applicants for an equity leadership team. We selected 30 participants for the equity leadership team. We received an overwhelming number of applications, two, almost 250 applications. So what we did as a way of extending the voice and the interest around equity into the community is we assembled work groups within each of the board areas. And we have as many of, we have as, in each of those areas, we have 10 to as many as 40 people who are part of those work groups. So if you're interested in more information about your specific area, be happy to share that with you.
Oh, I'll, I'll contact you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, um, next we are at report of board members, and we're gonna start with Mr. Miller.
We're at the end of this thing, and I apologize, I got kicked off the internet here at the district, so my apologies. But I first wanted to say a Happy Black History Month to everybody. Obviously, this is a month that we recognized disenfranchised community for over 400-plus years, and so, um, not just the unfortunate situations that have occurred in the first 400 years, but all of the great things that have come from the African-American community, from the inventions to the appointments to, um, uh, different political figures, so on and so forth. One of the great exhibits that we've had here in the city of Long Beach for a while has been hosted, uh, down in Megan's district, which has been pretty awesome. But clearly, this year, we're going, we're not gonna be able to have that event. But all things considered, uh, Laverne Duncan and a team folks over at Andy Street have put together, um, a great program this year, and that can be found at Andy's Street, that's A-N-D-Y-S-T-R-E-E-T dot H-U-B-L-I-O dot com, which will be the Black History event this year. At this event, it is going to be a number of really cool activities. They have a Sunday sketch for our youth. They're going to be doing a cooking with Baii. They're going to be doing an exhibit of forgotten images. It should be really, really cool, and I'm looking forward to it. Uh, outside of those things, I also wanted to address some of the comments that were stated during public comment, um, just to give everyone an update on my onboarding. I've been spending the past, um, 45 days or so really learning all the idiosyncratic components of the district with the support of the district team, along with working with a number of community constituents to learn some of their concerns, and I am beginning to build my communication platform. So very soon, I'll be coming out with, uh, my newsletter and my social media platforms where people can reach me in real time. So be on the lookout for those things. And lastly, I just wanted to congratulate Jill and the rest of the district on a fantastic Black History Month video we all put together. Pretty cool, as I got to see, uh, a number of my friends and folks working within the district of Black Voices that have had a major impact to the district's success. So great work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, Mr. Otto?
Sure, I, I'll be brief. It's late. Um, I've been, uh, working for the past 30 days or so trying to, uh, get myself really connected to the district by, uh, getting into my email account and, uh, and, uh, other things. And to people that have sent me, uh, messages or emails, we're now working through browser problems so I can, uh, keep copies of those, uh, those emails and respond. Uh, I haven't been able to until, uh, just literally in the last few days, and I'm anxious to do that, and I too am working on getting, uh, community input and opportunities for meeting, uh, in the community. I think the next 30 days or this month is gonna be a very, very important month for the district because there's a lot of anxiety out there, as we heard today, uh, about what's going on and what's gonna happen. And, uh, I'm very glad that we had the staff report following the public comments, and I hope that people will have a better understanding, although it does raise other questions that, uh, people will wanna know, but it's, it's, as has been said earlier during this meeting, the communications part of this is so important. People really wanna know what the rules are and what we, what we're gonna do and why we're gonna do it. And, uh, I, I'm, I, I wanna, especially in my area, but district-wide, be involved in that. Uh, I went to Catalina last week and spoke with the principal of the school over there. An interesting statistic is, I, I said, well, what's your enrollment? And she said, well, it's only about 480, and I said, I thought it was more in the low 600s. And she said, when the businesses closed down and there was no place to get, uh, there was hardly a place to get a sandwich over there when I was over there. She said, a lot of people left and went to other places. Some people, uh, went, went back to Mexico. Some people went to places like Tennessee and Louisiana, and they're not coming back. But it just, uh, was a wake-up call on the way that part of my district works. And, uh, so, uh, the principal and I are having ongoing conversations about what it is that they need. They had problems last year that I was attuned to before I was on this board because I was a representative of that area at Long Beach City College. But the problems that they identified back then are not happening now because, uh, it's all virtual, and so there aren't people on campus. But, uh, I think I can do that for every one of the, build relationships with every one of the schools in my area, and I've already spoken to each of the principals for the better part of an hour, uh, in November and December, and looking forward to, to ramping that up a little bit. So I thought it was a good meeting. We did a lot of substantive things tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, President Craighead. Ditto on Happy Black History Month. I think it not only provides us an opportunity to celebrate all the contributions of Black Americans, but to also take concrete actions to dismantle, um, anti-blackness, white supremacy, and structural racism. So, um, not only can we celebrate and reflect, but we can be motivated. So not only can we celebrate and reflect, but we can be motivated in taking action as well. Just a quick report regarding the community virtual office hours that I've been hosting. Three themes that have emerged, and we've talked about them here at our school board, but I want to thank the parents and community members that have been participating. Yesterday, I met with about twenty community members in English and Spanish. And I think highlights that emerged, we touched on today, right, just a lot of concern and discussion around what reopening in-person instruction looks like. Second, around support for our students with disabilities and concern around, you know, what's going to happen, right? Given that there are challenges right now virtually, what are the best options for parents that have, in some cases, parent last night, two students with disabilities at home at two different schools? Third, we still have, you know, concerns around accessibility, connectivity, and the digital divide that exists structurally in our communities. We have two potential bills at the state level, SB four and AB fourteen, that will address the structural inequities that we have that perpetuate disparities in educational outcomes. And so we still have a lot of challenges in our community. You know, more than halfway through the year now academically, that families are still struggling with a digital divide that exists. And lastly, I want to highlight this as a way to build, because I know staff, teachers, our exec staff is working really hard. The language accessibility is still a concern, and just communication at the school site level, access to information, since we're so dependent on the digital platforms, want to make sure to highlight that. But I want to end on a positive note tonight, and not that those things are not positive, because I continue to encourage folks to engage with us. There was a lot of thankfulness expressed for teachers in my meeting yesterday with community members and understanding the challenges that teachers are also having. And the length of time that we've been online. Thank you for reminding us, Dr. Brown, that we're almost at the year mark now. So I just want to convey that a sentiment throughout the concerns and the questions and the confusion is an appreciation for what teachers are doing, and a lot of beautiful stories about teachers going above and beyond, right, with the classrooms that they're teaching virtually. So thank you to everyone for your optimism, for the hope that you give our communities, but more importantly, for the light that we have at the end of this very long and very dark tunnel.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Ms. Kerr.
Yes, thank you. You know, in spite of all of the stuff that's happening, as many have alluded to, tremendous work continues to happen. Our counselors, our teachers, our school support staff, everyone's working really hard, and I think our social media feed will bear that out pretty heavily these days. So I want to thank marketing and media services for pushing all of that information out. But if you didn't know, there's an incredible education celebration website up. If you want to learn about what's happening at our schools, you can go there. The Human Trafficking Task Force hosted an event the other day in conjunction with the city's Human Trafficking Task Force. I know Long Beach Council PTA has been heavily involved in that as well. Some of our students participated. I encourage folks to learn more about that. It's something that we've always dealt with, and possibly now that students are out of the classroom more to pay particular attention to. So thanks for all who had a part in that. I want to thank Ms. Dela Cruz, Ms. Naruse, Ms. Will. I missed Ms. Tesea this morning because I had another appointment for inviting us into their room for Read Aloud Day today. So I jumped back and forth virtually between Signal Hill Elementary and Lafayette and got to be with TK and Kinders and second and third graders as they listened to stories and asked great questions and had really funny chats before the chats were disabled. I got to see cats, and I got to hear kids saying they were so glad to see classmates from other classes. So thank you for inviting us into that world today. I know Ms. Craighead will speak about that as well. I saw her virtually in a couple of classrooms as well. I want to thank the Long Beach Public Library Foundation for their decades-long partnership. They've always done incredible work, and again this year, giving every third grader in the district a dictionary. I was telling OCIPD that I was cleaning my bookshelves behind me, and, you know, a good bottom half of my bookshelves are all children's books, even though my children are now not children anymore and young adults. And I found their dictionaries that they got. And so it was a nice reminder this week, not only to see that, but then to find that dictionary on the shelf as well. So to the to the Library Foundation, thank you for being incredible partners for all of these years. One thing I wanted to ask staff, times are tough, and I'm not going to get into a downer because we could all spiral down into that place. But we know folks are struggling, and little ones are struggling and adults are struggling. And so we heard that recurring in some of our comments tonight and wondering if school support services and media services could potentially push out the links to our family resource centers once again to our suicide prevention and awareness numbers. If we can make an intentional effort over the next week or ten days to make sure that those newsletters and that great information that our support staff have been working on are readily available to our families as anxiety raises around potential reopening. If we could do that, would be great. But thanks to staff for continuing to rise to the challenge every time those goalposts get moved. I know you had prepared a whole lot of things, and then they get moved and prepare a whole lot more things for us. So thank you for all the work that went into the information we received tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Yes, we had the pleasure of being invited in with several classrooms today. And in one of the classrooms, there was an author who read her own book, and she was zooming in from Massachusetts. And so I think that's one of the benefits of having a Zoom situation is you can include people from different areas. And also, it made it possible for Ms. Kerr and I to jump from school to school without having to find part, you know, figure out where we're supposed to be, which was very liberating, actually. And we still got to see kids' happy faces and sit there and listen to a story being read by the author and witnessing the question-and-answer things being conducted by the authors. And the kids had some really great questions about how you write a book and, you know, the whole process of a book getting from their imaginations to their hands. And that was quite a treat this morning. So thank you for that invitation from our teacher librarians. Also, I'd like to highlight a former Lakewood student, Ona Tolliver. She was our Lakewood graduating class of 2020 and is now part of the U.S. Navy Honor Guard Unit. She was a part of the White House Housewarming Committee. She was right there in the middle of the action, holding a flag at the White House on inauguration day. And let's see, when she was at Lakewood High School, Ona was a four-year NJROTC cadet and battalion cadet commanding officer. And after graduation, she enlisted in the Navy and began boot camp. She distinguished herself at boot camp, serving a recruit company commander and was asked to join the Washington DC Honor Guard. So kudos to Ona, and we are very proud of her and other students who have gone on to do well. Let's see. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm just going to close tonight with a couple of pretty significant acknowledgements in my report. The first is I'd like to acknowledge Mara Garcia and Kelly Collopi and Dr. Davis as our health department. They have prioritized educators in the city's vaccination program in a way that is receiving national attention, actually. And so they have no control over how many vaccines are coming from the feds into the state and down into the city as, and we have no control of that. But what I do know is that they have maintained educators as a priority across our city. And because of that, while we had hoped to get ten thousand vaccine doses in the week that we started to vaccinate educators, we received fifteen hundred. And that was better than many places. And so I just really want to shout out to Mara Garcia and Kelly Collopi and Dr. Davis for knowing the role that educators play in our city. So in addition to offering the opportunity for vaccinations to our employees, we were also able to ensure in the third day of vaccination program that we vaccinated frontline workers that included custodians, those who are, have been working in meal service during the entire pandemic, and childcare and preschool teachers and other workers. And this is a significant process, progress, even though it's not enough to vaccinate our fifteen hundred, we still have eighty-five hundred of our full-time employees to go. But we're on our way. There were a couple of questions about information that was shared tonight. I do want it to make it known that the information that was shared in the reopening of schools update tonight will be released in multiple languages, in video and in print on Friday morning. It will include the image that describes the criteria that is being used right now at the state level, as well as some specifics around classrooms that parents have been asking. And it also encourages families to take the survey and gives a little bit more information about the survey that they're taking for elementary in terms of their choice of returning or maintaining their student in online learning. And lastly, I'd like to just acknowledge the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, and just to build on some of the sentiments around Black History Month. And so Dr. Kael and her team have provided our teachers with some really significant resources to be used across classrooms in the district in the month ahead. And so they start, what they sent out to teachers starts with, "As we reflect on a year of great challenges and accomplishments, it is also critical that we pause and reflect on the important contributions of traditionally marginalized communities in building, protecting, and preserving our democracy. In the month of February, we desire to uniquely celebrate and elevate the contributions of our African American community whose history teems with joy, struggle, and triumph. Having knowledge of African American history affirms identity, increases understanding of diverse histories and perspectives, and how individuals and communities have coped with and continue to meet challenges as they seek justice. Studying African American history allows us to see that history is not dead, but alive and illuminating, enhancing our understanding of various movements for justice, such as the abolitionist movement, the National Negro Convention movement, the Black Women's Culture Club movement, the Civil Rights Movement, the Black Power Movement, and Black Lives Matter. To support teachers, her team prepared a summary of African American History Month's origin, along with a set of general and content-specific resources to be integrated into the curriculum. These materials align with our goals as a district of promoting our students' academic success, cultural competence, and critical consciousness." And what was provided for teachers is just a beautiful set of resources that are age-appropriate, media resources, as well as print resources. And I hope that you all will see them being used in virtual classrooms during this month of Black History Month. I also, I got a text from Chris Sitson during the meeting to remind me, to your point, Mr. Miller, that there are seven more Black History videos to come. Those are released on Mondays and Wednesdays all month. And so lots to celebrate as we, as we engage in Black History Month across Long Beach Unified School District. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Announcements. Yes, Ms. Kerr.
I too want to thank the city for their partnership in all things health-related. We know Long Beach is a pretty special place, and some of the work that's been able to happen here, everything from the college promise to what we're doing right now, is because we have a city and education systems that respect and enhance each other's work. So I'm grateful for the city for all that they continue to do. On that note, Supervisor Han will be hosting another food drive at Jordan High School at the end of the month. As soon as I get a flyer, I will post it out publicly for folks. We know that our school meals continue to be resources for parents and families in this time, so remind you to grab your meals three times a week. They have family meals that you can grab and go for the weekend. Last week, they did a recipe contest with the veggies that went home, and I think this Friday is a pizza pack. So every child gets a ten-inch pizza to bake at home with their families. So please utilize those resources. And I do believe the Mayor's Fund for Education in partnership with the school district and other agencies in ECE have diaper, free diapers again this Friday, so look for that information. So make sure you're utilizing the resources that are available to us, and we, let us know if you need anything, because we can hopefully connect you to what you need if you don't know where to find it.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. I'd like to add that you can join the annual Week of Action, or at least the last few days anyhow, with the Black Lives Matter Coalition for Racial Justice and Education. You can go to blacklivesmatter@school.com for more information. And it's a good way to be involved with Black History Month. They have all kinds of resources on their website and information for people who care to seek that out. And I checked it out, and they have a lot of really good information, so parents have access to that, or students, or whoever, actually. Okay, any other announcements? No? Okay, how about adjournments?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us, and I want to thank the public for just being committed to the work that's being done and voicing their opinions. It is valuable, and we do we do appreciate it. It's tough sometimes, but we do appreciate it. And I appreciate all the staff that's been in, you know, I see, I see on our Zoom little squares. We have a lot of staff that have been in their offices probably since six-thirty, seven o'clock this morning. So I want to thank you all for your commitment to this job. And to everybody, good night. Thank you for being with us.